That the school choice part of education in Rhode Island is challenging. Because we really are losing more students than we're bringing in. We're starting to change the tide there. But I, when students tour the facilities in our neighboring communities, they're seeing more updated, more flexible, more 20th century, 21st century, sorry, I'm dating myself. 21st century learning spaces. We have the teachers, we have the staff, we have the programs, we have the clubs, the activities, the sports. We've got all the, the hard things to, that, for a district to possess. The facility is the one that's holding us back a little bit. And the reason is that there's a lot of things that we're preaching and that our teachers are picking up on, which is flexibility. And we don't have the space to be as flexible as our teachers are ready to be. It, nothing's more apparent of how flexible thinkers that our whole staff is and how we're adapting to this COVID hybrid model of some kids are virtual, some kids are, are in school. Some kids are, are, are doing a little bit of both. They're just, they're ready to go. And what they need is flexible spaces that really make it easier for them to do exactly that. And, and places that when people come in, they say, wow, this is, this is what a high school today is supposed to look like. So I really think that's important that we continue to, that we offer ourselves a flexible place to go along with the thinking that we're having. And that, that goes along with common spaces, breakout spaces, more well thought out spaces in the building such as right now, our fine arts program and our PE department are always tripping all over each other because of their proximity to each other. The proposed new building at Curtis Corner is much more well thought out. So then they have excellent spaces, updated spaces that are not on top of each other. And that's really important because those are two departments that really need to spread out in the building. I'm just looking at my notes, sorry, want to make sure that. And, and really like what I feel like this building will do, this proposed building could do is allow us to take our game to the next level.
So we'll, we'll have more to say about this because we're going to tie the goals that are being sort of outlined here to the designs that we're going to see from Tracy a little later on. But I will sort of foreshadow some of that connection between the goals and the design. And let folks know that one of the things that Chip has been clear about is that the, the curriculum, the, the, the way we're asking teachers to teach today, team teaching and this sort of thing do depend on space. When you have a small room that is, is square and has desks in a row, you can't do the same things as you can when the spaces are opened up. You've got two teachers who can be in strategic places in that space, dealing with equipment, dealing with various groups of students. That the flexibility that Chip is talking about has been a very important part of the conversation. And the need to begin to, to move away from a very regimented, Linda calls it cells and bells model of education where everybody's in a row and everybody's sort of looking at the front of the room. The, the modern curriculum, the modern teaching styles that, that we're trying to move to, the district is trying to move to are really all about being able to be flexible, being able to put equipment, not just in the front of the room, but strategically placed throughout the space. Having more than one teacher engaging groups of students strategically located throughout that space. So this flexibility thing is something we'll come back to, but I do think it's important to sort of let folks know that it's not just because it's nicer space, it's actually space that's designed to be more fluid and to accommodate different activities and functions than traditional teaching spaces. And then the last sort of reason for doing this now is that Ride is providing 15% more toward the total cost of the project. If we do it now, we have to do construction by 20, or begin construction by 2022 in order to be eligible. This is just a summary sheet of where those additional dollars or what those additional dollars are tied to. If we engage in these sorts of improvements, increased utilization, newer and fewer, getting to fewer schools is one of the objectives that the state has set. And reducing the number of schools in our inventory will make us eligible for greater state assistance. Decreases in overcrowding is not really one of our challenges, but it is one of the other elements that this school has. So this sheet and the presentation will be available for folks if they want to look. This is just a summary of where we are in the process.
Rob, could I just ask you a question on that? I had sorry to interrupt you. On that previous slide, the 15% more, could you just explain that? Because at this time I, we have been told by Ride, as far as I know, that if we move forward with the project at hand, that we're eligible for a 50% reimbursement. If they're contributing 15% more to the total project, we're.
Right, so under, under state, yeah, under state law, all, the lowest amount of money that any district can receive when approved for state assistance for construction is 35%.
So that's, this isn't a new 15%.
No, this is 15% above the state minimum, which we are a state minimum district.
There was something new and they were now giving us 65%. I thought we better start digging ourselves.
Unfortunately not. Unfortunately not. It's just 15% more than would be available under normal circumstances.
Yep, got it, thanks.
So this is sort of a timeline of where we're going. And I'm going to ask Sam Bradner to join me in just a minute, but I will go through this slide and then switch over to Sam. There are really five stages to this process, and it's important for folks to, to recognize this because we're very early still. It doesn't feel that way because we've been at this for a long time, but we're still actually pretty early in this process. The stage one application to the Rhode Island Department of Education is just a letter that says we need to improve our schools. There doesn't have to be a lot of detail in that identified need, but you do need to say we've got a problem we want to, we want to address. Stage two is where you begin to identify the solution. You begin to say, we've looked at this fairly closely. We need to increase space in the middle school. We need to decrease space among our elementary schools. We need to, you know, do X, Y, or Z with regard to the high school. And you present that, the, the proposed solution. This really isn't supposed to be the details of every construction aspect of, of the project, but it is supposed to be an overall policy framework within which construction, design, designing, construction will occur. We are on, we're, we're on the cusp of our stage two application. Now, we submitted a stage two application back in February of 19. So we've been here before. Ride sent us back to do this again because they weren't all that excited about the project that we had outlined. But we're about to submit an application. The deadline for that this year is September 15. So we need to get that application into Ride for their consideration on September 15. One of the questions that the school building committee wanted to make sure that we cover for folks tonight is what happens if the approval comes and a referendum is put out to the public and is turned down? And the answer is we go back to stage one. We have to start over again. If the plan is rejected, we can't afford it, we'll have to go back to Ride and submit a different school facilities project because we're only eligible for state assistance if we have an active and approved state funding plan. We have a, we have a facilities plan that they've accepted. They can be pared back. They don't need to be, you know, drastic renovations. They don't need to be, and historically ours have not been drastic renovations or radical changes to our schools. But you cannot receive state funding assistance unless you have a plan on file with the state. So we're going to have to do one of these no matter what. If it's not this plan, for whatever reason, the voters don't like it, the council doesn't like it, the school committee doesn't like it. We are going to have to debate plan that Ride approves eventually. After we get through the stage two, after we get to a bond approval, the next step would be design and construction. That's stage three, which is really the design and the review of the design by Ride. And then the money going into construction. That's when the state and our bonded funds start going to digging holes in the ground and building things.
Excuse me, Rob.
You, we lost your presentation.
Yeah, there you go, it's back.
Sorry. Give me just a second. I'm going to reshare. Is it back?
You're good.
Okay. As we move from, you know, the left side of the timeline to the right side of the timeline, we get to the final stage, which is really just asset protection. It's making sure that we preserve our assets going forward. One of the things that the state is trying to make sure that districts and municipalities don't do in the future is let things get out of out of control as they have under the moratorium and over the last 10 or 15 years. So they are requiring there be a very deliberate plan to maintain the facilities that are being improved or constructed with their money on this program. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Sam. Sam Bradner?
Thank you, Rob. Sam Bradner with the Parent Group. For those who don't know us, we are the OPM, working with the district and the town on this stage two process. And, and I think the, this, the slide that Rob just had up was a really great kind of summary. Kind of 30,000 foot. I'm going to go through a little bit more granular and then there's some slides after this that just kind of reiterate more graphically from Ride, kind of the steps that we go through. So and Rob touched on this a little bit. So the remaining stage two schedule, we are meeting with, with both bodies tonight with the school committee and the town council. One key step that everybody is waiting on is the conclusion of our cost estimating process. That is much to everybody's displeasure that that happens towards the end of the design process, which really makes it more, because you're dealing with, you know, kind of uncertainties around cost as, as you march through this design step. So we will be concluding that two weeks. And then there will be a final update to the school committee and the, the town council. I, I put the ninth on there, Rob. I think you were talking about maybe a different date on there. So I that my date there shouldn't be seen as, as set in stone. The supplemental Ride is on the 15th. And then Ride will go through its review process over the next two months as we lead up to the council on elementary and secondary education approval, which is on the 17th. You know, one thing just to reflect on our process, and I would say that it's been much more in depth than any project that we've worked on in Rhode Island so far, is that we have had probably between six and 10 meetings with Ride, with the school building authority over the last four or five months. That was a tall task, especially during kind of the COVID restrictions that were in place. But Joe De Silva and his team really went out of their way to work with the district, with RGB, with the district's educational planner to make sure that we were making good decisions along the way, but also we wanted to make sure that they were seeing the progress that we were making. And while that does not guarantee an approval, I think it puts us in a very good place because they're really seeing the process evolve right along with us. And I think that that will help as they go through their review process. It'll be happening in that September, October timeframe. Assuming that you have approval at that November date, then you have a six month window to go out for your actual referendum. So right now, I'm showing that as a winter slash spring of 21 timeframe. Obviously, that will be by, you know, by the, the leadership at the town, the school committee as to what and when that activity will happen. So here we're just kind of plugging it in that it'll happen within that and complete by spring 21. If we go to the next slide, this line of the stage two, or excuse me, for processes that Rob alluded to. And again, this assumes that you have a referendum, you are ready to get underway. More detailed process. Want to echo what I said, even though it's been a very for several years, trying to get to what you pull another round of very hard and detailed work that happens after this. This will involve.
Can I just inter, real quick, I think you were cutting in and out right, right just then and there. And I think that was a super important point you were making. So I want to make sure you can say it again.
Sure. So as, as we leave stage two and enter into stage three, can I, can you hear me okay, Kate, now?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, great. We will actually enter into a much more detailed and I would submit challenging step of the process. Because we will be going through multiple rounds of design iterations from what we call schematic design and all the way through construction documents. At each of those steps, there will be a cost estimate that is completed. Typically, what you would see is the community would also do a peer cost estimate as well, either with the OPM or through another party. So while this process to date has been, you know, I, I think robust, it will get more so as we kind of move into these next phases. Because that's when we change the plans from kind of concept, early schematic into the detailed drawings that include all the systems, all the dimensions, all the specifications around each of the elements that are going to go into these buildings. And, and you'll make, you, you'll have to evolve your decision making. You do, and you kind of set your, you have to work through the various levels of design and continue to make things around go to your meeting for the total cost that has been set by the, the community leadership. So just at a high level, for folks who are not aware, Broad Rock really kind of sets the schedule going forward. If Curtis Corner is to become the high school, then the first step that has to happen is, is that the current middle school students at Curtis Corner need to move to Broad Rock. So Broad Rock becomes kind of the, the gating process that has to be completed in order for that move to happen. So what we outline here is if we assume a regular start, and when I say regular, I mean post referendum, when you would actually start your design process, we're talking, and I'm, I'm, I'm using kind of quarters of the year here because specific dates can't be pinned down right now, but we would see a, a spring 21 to a winter of 22 design process. A bid and award process that would happen in the winter of 22 into early spring. And ideally you'd be starting construction in, you know, as soon as the weather allows in spring of 22. And then that process, you know, there's, there's debate between the design and the OPM team about how long that that construction will take place. I would submit that the dates we have here are a little bit on the conservative side. But we think that's about a 12 month window to do those two additions that Tracy will walk us through. And then we would have FFNE delivery and occupancy in the summer of 23. So would we, now that we understand when that the Curtis Corner could be vacated, which would be the end of the 2023 school year, we know start at Curtis Corner. So then what you see in the next series of dates is the Curtis Corner whole process, which would then follow. And really what we're trying to do, if you can, my cursor here is get to this start instruction in summer 23, which correlates with the students leaving at, at the end of that same year and having the summer off and then moving into the, into Broad Rock the next year. So we work backwards from that date to see when we need to start the design process to get to bid and award, and then to be able to start that work. This construction process will take significantly longer because of the nature of the, both the additions that will be in play that again Tracy will walk us through, as well as the renovations to the existing school. What that does is puts us in a completion range that is not lining up perfectly with the conclusion of a school year. So that's something that we're going to need to continue to evaluate to see, A, would the district decide and the community decide, would you do a mid-year transfer out of Columbia? Or would you build in a little bit of extra cushion into that schedule? And just assume that you're going to occupy at the beginning of the 25, 26 academic year. So those are, those are issues that we still need to have much more detailed conversations around. But this is the schedule that at least we would put forward to Ride, assuming that it goes through an approval process with the leadership to, to at least look at kind of the, again, the 30,000 or maybe the 20,000 foot level of, of what that schedule could look like. And then the last slide is the elementary schools. And what we've done here is these could really happen in any summer sequence. I think it really is dictated by the community and by the district. So what we would want to do is execute all of these projects simultaneously over the summer, you know, the summer off season. So ideally you would start design the, the fall prior to whenever you wanted to do the work. That, that work would be done in the spring. You would bid an award in the spring. And then conduct that construction FFNE delivery and then occupancy and be ready for that following September start of school. This could happen in the, you know, this could happen in the 21 to 22 season, could happen in the 22 to 23 season and so on and so forth. So this is really flexible based on when the community wants to go through that work and also trying to make sure that we can actually fit it in in that off season work and have the least amount if, if, if not any or no disruption to the existing operations while the, the community is in school.
Can I just jump in one sec and clarify, when we talk about design in stage two versus design in stage three, and I'm just hoping that at some point we get a specific clarification that like right now with stage two being out and some of the design plans being out, we have community members that question like, you know, well, that's really small CTE program, you know, where is your music class going to be? Where's the, you know, culinary arts going to be? Like, you know, asking more programmatic type of questions? And my understanding is stage two, we're not at that level yet. We have basics like our core. But that, the actual, when we go into and design for our actual programs and in our educational programs, that happens in stage three. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, and, and I'll let, Kate, I'll let Trey answer probably a little detail than I can, but I would agree. I mean, I, I think stage two, you really are trying to set as much information as possible with an understanding that it's not set in stone. I, I would say that the team has done a lot of work programmatically, especially with the work with, with Frank Locker, really going through the programming and the ed visioning process. So a lot of that work has been done, I would say almost, you know, enhanced as, as part of the stage two step. But it does, it, it does not mean that it's completely static and you will continue to evolve as, as we go more refined, again, from that kind of 30,000 foot level down to the 5,000 foot level of the plan development. Tracy, I don't know if you want to add on that because I'm sure.
And say that we wouldn't be starting the planning process when you go into the construction drawings. A lot of that has been done to make sure that we have an accurate representation and a working plan that meets the needs of the community. And then it continues to be refined down to the details as you go through the different stages of the construction documents. Ride calls this stage in the stage two application schematic design. It's more of a conceptual slash schematic design. And then once you get into stage three, which is the construction documents, they also have a schematic design and a design development and a construction document review meeting and with Ride to go through that. So it's not locked in stone. It can continue to evolve and develop, but it has been programmed to meet the needs. We have met with the leaders and the principals and the staff of the schools to make sure that we are on target. And that's how the, the plans are priced and that locks you into the budget. So.
Tracy, while, while you're here, do you want to talk about the next two slides, which are Ride's more detailed summary of their timeline, their, their schedule of activities?
Tracy, can you give me one quick second? Sam, a lot of people, when you see acronyms, might not know what they mean. So for everyone that might not know, FFNE is furniture fixtures and equipment.
That, that's correct. My apologies, Brian. Yes, furnitures, fixtures and equipment on FFNE. Sorry, it's, it's easy for us to digress into acronym way too easily.
No problem. Thank you. This is able, real quickly, I also see that Stephanie has her hand raised. Stephanie?
Thank you. Yeah, this is just a very quick question. I was just wondering if someone in Frank Locker's role as like kind of that consultant that's leading us through the, the visioning. Is, is, is that assistance and that consulting more important at this phase two? Kind of the schematic, the conceptual phase, or will he continue to work with us and make sure that even as we kind of drill down and make, and, and figure out what the more specific programmatic plans looks like, that it continues to align? I was just wondering what that typically looks like or what we, how we expect that collaboration to continue.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll jump in, Stephanie. I, I think it's most valuable in, in the step that we just went through. I think Frank is, and, and this, I think the school committee got to see a lot of that results real time with, with working with Linda directly on it. I think it's very important to kind of form the foundation with the ed planner. I, we typically, we see less of that role once we move into stage three because we're assuming that you are you know, that you've kind of really set the program and really got it settled into place. And then it becomes taking that, those programmatic items and turning them into kind of more concrete bricks and sticks and, and, and vertical development.
Thank you.
Okay, you want me to touch base on this slide?
Yeah, just, I, I think quickly, I don't think there's, there's a lot of detail on these two slides. I'm not sure it's all that important, but I do.
No, yeah, this, I think maybe this has even been seen before, but just to kind of refresh people of where we are in the process. And we're right in the middle in that stage two develop solution section, as mentioned, getting ready to submit the stage two application to Ride for September 15. We do wanted to, point of this meeting was to update the town council and school committee. Local support is a requirement for the application to be submitted. Then once it goes into Ride, you have that six month timeline to go out for referendum. Then once you get approval from the council is when you go into the stage three, which is more of your construction document section of the, of the project. And then you start again, you do a full schematic design submission, you go out to bid and you start the construction project.
And you're still on. Should I click your link?
Sure.
Okay. So Tracy's now going to walk us through some of the design work that's been done. To do this, I'm going to have to let's just see how I can do this. Hold on a second. I'm going to do this. Everyone seeing my web browser?
No, we're not yet.
Okay, hold on then. I'm going to stop sharing and reshare. Hold on. Should have it now, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Go Tracy.
Wherever you want to start with Broad Rock or Curtis Corner, whatever, whatever you like.
You've done this more than I have.
Go ahead. You can start with the, we'll just go in order. You can start with the plan.
Great.
So this is the proposed plan with two wing additions to Broad Rock. We are, we have evaluated this and worked on this, as we said, with the school department and with Ride to get what we need to support the educational component of doing the true middle school with the sixth, seventh, eighth grades, but then trying to be very careful and limit the amount of additions and renovations that we're doing. So at one time we had four separate additions, one in the front to kind of expand the community room and the nurse section, one to enlarge the cafeteria, and then the two wing additions, which were a little bit more lineal on each side. So we've regrouped those. We have a large extending, extended learning area that could be very flexible and also accessible off of the classrooms. We've also done a complete mirror image of the two wings. So there'll be some value in a little bit of a more simplistic design and not two different footprints that the contractor would have to do.
Can I interrupt you before you go any further? Is there any way to make this bigger so that our?
Yeah, I was just going to say, can you click? No, there's actually a button. If you zoom back out that right next to the, to the right of the download, I think that will actually expand to full screen view perhaps. Oh, that didn't help very much.
Does that help? Just? Does that help? Just?
It's just the font is a little fuzzy, so it's hard to read, but it is better in in my. My view. Thank you. You might just have to kind of like.
Scroll around a bit.
Scroll around a little bit if there are some like key points to focus on. Thank you.
Sure. So on the this is the lower level and on the left hand side would essentially be the sixth grade pod. So you would see it would extend from the existing building down the the wing of the existing building into the new addition. Above it would be in the same exact plan would be the seventh grade pod. And on the second floor, the eighth grade pod, all having the same configuration of some of the existing building. And then the new addition, the extended learning area and flexible classrooms off of that. Extended learning area with operable petitions. So you could open that up and get the entire grade of each pod. In that area, if you needed to have like a mini assembly or some. Instruction that you needed to get an entire grade fit in. On the lower level on the right hand side, that would be a lot of your support. So you have the two existing art classes. The two fitness rooms, you we put the community room into the new addition. With an exterior door so that you could have the community come into that and use that room for different things either, you know, after hours. And then also having your kind of your steam spaces there, your maker spaces, your robotics. And being very flexible with what you could do with that space and what you could offer in that space.
Does that say outdoor classroom there? I'm not sure if you're getting to that part. I wasn't sure if I was reading it correctly. Sorry.
Nope, that's correct. So both of those wing additions would allow an area for some outdoor space. That could be outdoor classroom, whether there's. You know, science areas out there or sustainable things where you could grow different different things. That could be used to provide educational component to that. The cafeteria cafeteria we had looked at many times and what we've we've come up with now is kind of. Taking out the stage that's at the end of that and that just by doing that, we increase the floor area and also infill that lower level. So now the entire cafeteria, you get more space and it's all at at one level. So you can get a lot more tables and chairs in that area. And then also providing some nooks that would open up. For seating and visibility out to the corridor. There'd be a stage that could be flexible and then that would be located along the exterior wall. That's pretty much it in a quick nutshell. Are you looking about 32,000 square feet of total new addition? About 8,000 per footprint on each wing. So it's two stories. So that's where you get about the 32,000. Okay, you want to go to the rendering for Broad Rock? It's yep. Okay, so this is a an image of the looking kind of from the soccer field, then tennis courts that are there back towards the the new addition. So this shows right in the middle of the tall vertical would be a new stairwell. We do have to put in a new stair just because of the travel distance from that wing back to the existing building. And then just the two story addition with some outdoor space and green space around it. Using similar materials to kind of blend into the existing building that you have, but a little different. More modern kind of aesthetic than than what's there.
So a clarification, that was the that was the side of a wing?
Yes, the new wing. Yes. Yep. And then the site plan. And then this just shows. I don't know if there's more than one page here. The existing site, there we go. This is the the second page obviously shows the new additions and then how the parking and loop would be reconfigured. Once those additions are there for the traffic flow and for the the parking that's on that site. I know there have been issues with some cross traffic and congestion with parent drop off. And the buses coming in so that all would be addressed kind of in this one way loop. That would then not have that crossing of both the parent drop off and and the buses. And then some additional parking area to support what had been relocated for the two wing additions.
So there, so in that picture. Entrance and and exit drive where where right now we only have that they're both one in the same.
Correct. Yep. Yep.
Tracy Jovili, I have a question on what looks like new parking to the east there.
Yes.
Isn't that parcel substantially wet?
No, so you can see we did have that parcel, the wetlands flagged. So you can see to the it's actually on that drawing. The way the wetlands are, it's it's on all of the drawings, so you can just stay. But if you go to the far east, those dashed lines. That's the wetland flagging.
Thank you.
So there's still even between the wetland flagging and the additional parking, there would still be some green space there as well. Okay.
And where is the library? I just didn't see it on there.
Oh, the libraries, it's actually a media center, but it's in the same location on the second floor. With some some minimal renovations, but not really a new reconfiguration of that. Okay. Want to move on to Curtis Corner?
Tracy, can I suggest that we start with the site plan?
Sure.
I think that would make sense. So we can kind of zoom out from the the macro to the micro.
This is the BRMS.
Yeah, I think this is just the wrong file, Rob. It's just below the rendering of, yeah, nope, yes. Yep. Whoop. Did you click on the wrong? That should be it.
All right, there it is.
There you go. Has a lot of information, so it's a it's a big file. Yeah.
I'm going to keep it at this level and when you want to zoom in, we can.
Um, sure. I don't know if it's easier for people to see if we if we zoom in or I can start at this level and just talk about. The development of the site. So obviously, expanding on the existing building. Kept the the new construction kind of portion of the site down on the lower portion of the site. We also are making. Every attempt to keep all the parking down along that area as well. So you can see whoop.
Sorry, guys. There it is.
Okay. So one of the things I think it'll just take a second to to refocus, but coming off of the Curtis Corner Road. Which is now the main entry in front of the building would essentially be the student entrance or the secondary entrance to the building. There's bus drop off and parking. Located in that area and then the existing access road, which goes up into the higher portion of the site. Would take you around to the west side of the building and that's where the new main entrance would be. We also concentrated the. Additions to be some of the larger spaces that would be more difficult to get in a renovated. Building. So there'd be a new main entrance with the administration, high school administration. Adjacent to the existing district administration building. That building will remain, but then be tied into the new entrance with a canopy. So that you could get back and forth between the two buildings and still be underneath the canopy. When we look at the floor plan, I can show you the entrance a little bit more and the secure vestibule and a secure and a community room there. And then the new addition would predominantly house the auditorium and the gymnasium. There'd be parking. You can see, I don't know why it's not focusing that well, probably because it's a large file. But you can see the wetlands were also flagged on this site and the setbacks we have for those and then. Concentrating the new parking around the lower portion of that site. There were 12 test pits done on this site. And all the test pits around where we're proposing new additions. Were good. They didn't indicate any ledge. There was one in the far west where we're proposing the parking that had. Kind of a low water table, but nothing to be concerned of. And then as we go up the. Higher portion of the site, there were some test pits that and we also tried to maintain and minimize. Any disturbance to the disc golf course that's there. A couple of the test pits that are in the disc golf portion in the practice field that's being utilized. Did have some ledge a little bit, couple feet down, but again, we're not proposing anything in that area. We would be displacing the tennis courts. So looking, we've looked at several different locations and options to put the tennis courts. Right now, the the best option is in the existing field that's up on the site. And then all the tennis courts would be doubles courts, so they could be utilized for the. School tennis team. Right now, there's two double courts and three singles courts. So that would be an enhancement to the athletic component of that.
Tracy, if I may, right here, it is important to let the council know. This site plan with the tennis courts located where they are on the site plan is not one that the Recreation Commission believes is. Acceptable. So we we should note that this is the last rendering. It's the last, the most recent rendering, I should say, not the last. Of possible locations for the tennis courts. We still have some investigation to do here.
Right. There was a mention of of maybe looking at in front of the South Road School. So to have the least amount of disturbance to the existing athletic facilities that are there. We would still be looking at that has not been developed yet.
So Tracy Jovili, I have a couple of questions here. On the test pits, are you also checking for groundwater?
Yes. So, yeah.
Go ahead.
You can't read it because I think it's such a large file, but every one of these squares has the where there's a test pit. Indicates when, at what depth they and ran into the groundwater and whether they ran into ledge. So I'm sure this will be posted to board docs or whatever. When fewer to download just the PDF, you would be able to read. Every test pit location.
And when were the test pit, when were the tests done?
Test pits were done. This spring.
I want to say it was late, late February and March, probably.
Yeah.
Just before, yeah.
There is a full test pit report that is posted and you can get that and then actually read all the backup data. That goes with the test pit location that's on here.
Okay. And then another question I have is I there were other concerns of the rec commission. Have those been addressed?
We have looked at several different site options to try to work with them on their. Comments. So as mentioned, I think we're getting closer, but we're still looking at the final location of the tennis courts.
Right, but the recommission has other concerns as well. I wonder if they've been addressed.
Joe, I think the short answer to your question is no, they've not been entirely addressed. The main concerns are that there be no disruption to playing surfaces. And that there be no loss of parking and accessibility to those playing services by residents who are not students. So some of that is just a matter of configuring spaces like the tennis court. The tennis court right now does does displace other surfaces. So that's a problem. It also reduces parking, which reduces accessibility for non-student users of the rec facility. So they haven't been addressed and the only thing we've got left here in our, you know, quiver, I think. Is moving these tennis courts out in front of the South Road School. And then dealing with the parking for the tennis courts out in front of South Road School. That still has that schematic still has to be drawn up. We have to make sure that that works. But at that point, this design wouldn't interfere with playing spaces that exist today. And the parking question is still an open one. I don't, I don't believe that you'd be displacing parking, but. That still would have to be drawn up. We haven't seen that.
Yeah, Rob, I can just clarify on the parking. I mean, there's still a. A portion of this upper existing lot, which is a due west of those proposed tennis courts. Where we are proposing a share of those spaces in order to meet what we believe to be the total requirement for the school itself. With the understanding that. We we understand from the recommission and from Terry Murphy that there is obviously daytime use there. But also trying to back. You know.
Yes, yeah. So that that existing lot right now is proposed to be some shared parking. That would get you to a parking count of about 484, I believe.
So I think the short answer, I heard it from Rob especially, is that no, we haven't addressed them. And I think that's important that we do make sure that we address those as part of the the whole project.
And also tried to make it clear to RGB that this needs to be done before the application is submitted as well. We need to have a plan going forward that is acceptable to as many people in the community as possible. We need to explore the possibility of going in front of schools before the submission of an application to ride. RGB understands that, I think. Yes?
Yes, yep.
Rob, if I may, David Palazzetti has his hand up, the recommission member. Would you like to bring him in to speak right now or hold off till later?
Not my meeting.
So I would say first off that Alicia has her hand raised, so I'll take her comment first.
Okay.
So I mean, Dave can speak too. I I just wanted to say I think that it is important that we. Figure out what the recommission, you know, really wants to see happen and. And and work with them. I mean, definitely that's part of this project's success, you know, hinges on everything working out with all of the other departments. In town. And so I wondered, I know that the rec commission has been at the table during some building committee meetings. So have they provided any remedies? And maybe Dave will speak to that, that that they that they want to see happen that that are feasible. that, that are feasible or something that we could consider, like what their solutions are here.
I haven't heard that. I think maybe, I'm sure Dave may speak to that. I don't know how he would feel if the tennis courts were located in front of South Road School, if that would alleviate a lot of the issues that they have, but certainly can let him speak to that.
Yeah, if they had an idea on their own and they said that, you know, this is what we want to see happen. I just wonder if they've, like.
I haven't heard that, so.
Yeah, so Joe Vili, just one more comment. I think certainly the rec commission should be at the table. But if, if we're creating this problem with this project, it's not for the rec commission to solve, it's for the rec commission to be satisfied.
Well, this is a good opportunity to bring Dave in. Emily, do you have a quick question that Dave might be able to address too?
Yeah, it's really more for the whole group. In investigating over the last couple of months, the history of the fields back there, as I listened to the questions and the concerns of the rec commission in the building committee, working together, which is really great. It has come to my attention that RIDE reimbursed the district for those, the tennis courts and the fields. So really, they are, should be, it seems, under jurisdiction of the school department, not the rec department. So I'm just wondering where the responsibility lies. And again, I think it's essential that we work with the different committees in town so that we have a good relationship and that everybody is feeling heard. That's obviously of utmost importance. But I'm just wondering if we need to be a bit thoughtful about who paid for the projects in the first place in terms of who were now handing over the responsibility of making calls about what happens to them. Because if they were school building projects, which they were, and the, and RIDE reimbursed us for them, it seems like figuring out what to do with them at this point really lies at the school department level, not at the rec level. So it's just something we should be thoughtful of.
I'm gonna let Dave.
Emily, let me just jump in a second. From the tax payer, taxpayer standpoint, it's the same pair of pants, it's just a different pocket.
So, but it's not because, it's, it's not because it's, you're talking about changing a, an area that was built with school construction funds from the state. So I, I just think it's something that we need to be thoughtful of as we move forward. And I'm certainly not insinuating that we shouldn't be working with the rec commission about this at all. I think it's important that our fields are accessible for everybody in town. That's one benefit of this project is that it is accessible. This area is accessible and will be able to use by all taxpayers, not just by the families and students that are using the school during Monday through Friday, nine to three. So certainly not insinuating that we don't have a good line of communication and work together on this. But it, it's just concerning that, right, that this was a school building project to begin with. And it, it feels like it, the, the decisions at this point should be made by the school department.
That's all. I agree. I just think that it, it would be weird if the rec commission, you know, was uncomfortable with the tennis courts being displaced, but didn't also have, you know, some, some sort of idea of a remedy, a remedy for it. You know, like I think that we are totally open to working with them. We want to make this work. We want to find a place for the courts. So I'm hoping, you know, Dave says this is sort of what we're looking for. I think that would be helpful.
So I'm gonna let Dave answer for himself. But what I would like to suggest as well, I agree with you, Emily, as far as the tennis courts go, the proposals are taking, not taking away the tennis courts, are taking away recreation fields. And I believe that's where the commission is coming in and saying, that's the problem. It's not necessarily the rebuilding of the tennis courts.
Right, but the fields too, that whole project was a school building project. The fields, the, the roads back there, the whole thing. We were, the school department was reimbursed for by RIDE. So that, that's, I'm just bringing it up as something to, to be considering, that's all.
And Emily, respectfully, I'll address that. I know where RIDE got the money, they got it from the taxpayers.
Thank you all, this is Abel. Stephanie, you've had your hand raised too. Is your point to this rec commission issue? All right, your hand is down, so I'm guessing it's okay. Dave, are you here with us?
Oh, sorry, I forgot to unmute myself. I lowered it so that it wouldn't be continued to be raised. So is it okay if I just make a quick comment or a question? So my thought was just that, you know, we're about to vacate the property on Columbia that is very close to the Guild, very close to downtown, about some existing athletic fields. And so I just was wondering, like, what is the overall goal? Is it the availability of playing surfaces and fields? Or does it all have to be in a concentrated space with specific, like, with, like in a singular space? Because I know that there's been a lot of discussion about the future of that Columbia Street property. But if, if the goal is just availability of playing fields to the community at large, I just wanted to put that out there as potentially a solution, and maybe it's been discussed, but.
Thank you, Stephanie. Dave, it looks like you're unmuted, so you should be able to speak.
Thank you, Abel. This is Dave Palazetti, chairman of the rec commission. Thanks for bringing me in. A lot to cover there in the last second. I'll try to, I'll try to hit them all, but probably better if we maybe do back and forth if I miss something. So Emily, I see your point. However, I disagree with the funding source. My sources tell me from the rec department that that was a, those fields were built with a taxpayer funded bond that was not through the school department for the fields where the tennis courts will be located. Much like Kate said, the original tennis courts may have been funded by RIDE. The location of where those tennis courts going are on the multipurpose field, which was funded with a separate source. I could be wrong with that, but that's what I'm told by the recreation department. And that is our concern. We have tennis courts not only fronting, but more or less blocking the multi, and using the multipurpose field, which is a field used by the high school. So you're losing available space to the high school teams by putting that tennis court there, such that more of the students will have to be bused for their recreation activities than we have now. To Stephanie's point, town, or the hazard field that's located next to the Columbia field is already a town park. It is used almost exclusively by the school department, but it is technically a town park. Having that recreation space there is great. If the Columbia school was completely demolished and it was all turned into field space, that would be great, but realize that within one square mile, we have about four other parks in there. And they're all similar urban parks with baseball fields, basketball courts. There's the, the River Walk, there's nice parks there. But none of them give us what we have at Curtis Corner, which is excellent walking trails through the woods, the disc golf course, the larger multipurpose fields. You, you can't just replace them one for one. So yes, our concern is that what we have at Curtis Corner will be lost. And, and the parking that was addressed, it's not a small amount of that upper parking lot that's being used. It's 50 of the 70 spots. So approximately 70% of that parking lot will be used by the school during the day. That is only accounting for the parking that is currently at Columbia Street. That does not account for the fact that you have a larger auditorium in this school. It is actually size that you could have an event that is bigger than the current school. And that would require even more parking. But what is even more concerning during the daytime, when folks would want to come in and play disc golf, walk their dog, walk on the trails, is that the students who are juniors, who don't have permission to park at Columbia Street, all park on Route 108. And they walk down the street and they hop into school. My, my kids did it when they were juniors, I'm sure most of your kids did as well. Those kids are now going to park in the park. And unless there's going to be some kind of school department police force preventing students from parking in the baseball softball field area, I will promise you that it'll be nearly full occupancy of that park during the school day. And that is what is the most concerning thing to the parks and rec. So yes, to, to, to make it quick, I'll say, loss of recreational fields, bad. Loss of parking, very bad. Loss of our irrigation well, bad. And none of these are being accounted for in the cost estimate you're looking at. Linda has been very clear from the beginning that she did not want to harm the park, the parks department in this proposal, and that she wanted to work collectively together with us. However, the site plan that's going forward, the one that I assume is going to be cost estimated, does harm the parks. And despite the memo that we wrote with our concerns that the town council forwarded to the school building committee three weeks ago, the architectural firm and the school department, who they work for, have not reached out to the parks department a single time in three weeks to look for remedies. We had to beg to get to the table. And while we've been at the table, we've been either ignored or placated, you choose the term. But in eight months, we are no closer to an acceptable park plan or site layout than when we started with. And that is where the frustration is becoming anger at the parks department. And I'm not speaking just for myself. There's four members on this commission and we all feel 100% the same way. I appreciate the comments I heard tonight from Alicia, from Joe, from the others that, and from the manager that said, we have to get this right before we go to stage two. I agree, because right now it is far from right. And I appreciate any support we can get to fix this. Or else, you know, you're going to go forward to stage two, that you're going to have a large demographic of this town, not just the K through 12 demographic, but the ones that are from birth to death, that use these parks are going to be disenfranchised by the school department.
Thanks, Dave. One issue that was brought up was the potential for moving the courts over there sort of right adjacent to South Road in front of the old South Road School. Is that something that the rec commission has looked at? Is that, do you think that's a suitable location?
I, I think it's worth a look. I wish we'd been offered that opportunity. There, it is probably possible. It doesn't solve the loss of the irrigation well, it doesn't solve the parking issue. It does solve the loss of recreational field space, doesn't help the disc golf course or the road going through it. But just looking at it from my engineering perspective, I would say the building setbacks and the road setbacks, based on the size of that tennis area and the available space in front of South Road School, I don't think it'll fit. And I know behind the school, there's, which was another proposal from RGB, that there's a septic and leach field back there that also wasn't acceptable to town engineer. So it, it, I'm not saying, I, I like to come to the table with solutions. But in January, when this first was presented, I voiced my concerns because I didn't see any. And in eight months, I still don't see any. But I'm willing to listen. And I know the other members of the commission are as well. What, what we proposed, which has been flatly denied because of the cost implications, was to build a turf multipurpose field in the existing multipurpose field, that big area where the tennis courts are, a turf field with a new stadium that could be used by multiple teams multiple times with a lot less maintenance because it's turf. And therefore, you could put the parking and the tennis courts on the existing football field. We've offered that up, but we were basically told, no way, no how, can't afford it. And while I understand that, I think it would make a better project because you'd have the school building and the school facilities all in the southern part of the site. And the upper part of the site would be a recreation facility that wasn't really harmed, with the exception of the parking, but could also provide a much better experience for the athletes and potentially reduce the amount of athletes that would have to travel.
I see a couple of hands up. Alicia, yours is first.
So I guess, like what I'm hearing from Dave, I mean, he's obviously very frustrated. And speaking for the rec commission too, I think it sounds like they don't think there really is a remedy here, maybe that they just don't want this plan to go forward. And I, I'm saying this as someone who has not attended all of the building committee meetings. I've, I've watched a few, I've listened to several. So I, I don't, you know, obviously JC can speak more to this, but. I mean, is this true? Are we not, have we not worked with the rec commission? Or have our architects or project managers not worked with the rec commission enough to come out with a feasible plan? Or is it that, is it partly that the rec commission's like, there is no feasible plan? This isn't, you know, they just don't support this project. That's where I'm like, kind of trying to, I'm trying to figure that out. And hopefully.
Alicia, this is Dave again, if I may. I'm on record actually supporting the relocation of the high school to this site. I'm not against the overall project, but I've yet to see a creative solution that's workable from this architectural firm.
And JC, you have your hand up.
Hi, yeah, I just, I'm, I'm probably a little too emotional to even probably even speak at this point about this. But I feel offended by a lot of what Dave Palazzetti has said. I feel that we have met with them. They have sat at the table more than any other group. They have brought no comeback with good ideas. This new Dave's idea to use the space where the tennis courts are now with the new stadium, blah, blah, blah. First I heard of that, and I've been at every meeting. I guess that's, I, I don't want people in the community to feel like this building committee has not listened to the rec commission. They have found different places for the tennis courts. They have brought different renditions for the site plan. And the rec commission just, no, no, no. They just, you can't touch an inch off of the fields. They aren't willing to compromise. They have not, Terry Murphy has come to the table some. She has expressed her support for the Curtis Corner project. Dave's support for the project tonight, right now, first I've heard of that. His overall attitude towards this project has been, I'm going to do what I can say to make sure that this doesn't happen. And that's my, my personal feeling from sitting at this table. So please, people in the community watching this, do not believe that this committee has not taken into account the feelings, considerations, fields, courts, whatever, of the rec commission, because we have.
Abel, if I may?
Sure, Dave.
JC, I have to completely disagree with you because I've uttered at least at another school building committee, my fresh support for this project, if we can find a workable site plan. If you were at the July 12th meeting onsite with the architects, John Beaufort laid out exactly the plan for the football field relocation. And we have worked tirelessly, but all we've gotten is completely unfeasible plans. They first put the tennis courts on a rocky hillside, which would look great from Google Earth, but it doesn't work. Then they put it on a field that had no drainage. And now we're at this other location. So we have been working, we are very much supportive. And I disagree wholeheartedly with you on all of your comments. And I am quite offended by your perspective. And I will leave it to anybody else on that committee to speak up. Who was there, when I've been on multiple of these meetings, and I've been consistent from day one, we need to find a workable site plan and that cost has to be included. We could, we have also offered that if you can't work it here, that we just need to be made whole. And that in the project cost, site somewhere else on town, in town, has to be basically built to replace those lost recreational fields. We didn't say it had to be at CCMS, but it has to be included in the site plan overall, to be included in the cost estimate, or else the real cost of this project isn't going to happen. Because once the bond is approved, what I've heard from the town manager is the money is turned over to the school department for contracting and they choose what actually gets done. And our fear on the recreation commission is that it's going to be very easy when cost overruns come in, that the first things that are going to be cut is the money to replace the lost fields. And we want to ensure that that is not the first thing that is cut. That is not cut at all, that we have. That is not cut at all, that we have the recreation facilities made whole like Linda promised us at multiple meetings, which you were at, JC. And that is all we're asking for. We're not asking for anything extra. We're just asking to be left whole. And we are willing to give up a little bit. You're putting a road through our disc golf course. You're putting parking that's affecting our disc golf course. We're really not fighting that. You're putting a parking lot over irrigation well. It's going to require the town to buy buy water from Suet. We're not even arguing that. We're trying to find common ground, but this particular plan is still unacceptable. We've been on point from day one. And I wish you'd run back and watch the recorded meetings and if you disagree with anything I say.
Well, you just proved my point in that we are working with you, right? We're working.
You haven't gotten any closer. I'm not going to get an argument on Twitter with her on.
Well, we're not on Twitter.
Zoom with you, but my point is, we have been, we begged to get to the table. We got to the table. We've been ignored. We've been placated. We've been placated.
You're at the table and we are working with you.
You've got three weeks to finish the job.
I appreciate how the dogs uh got involved in the conversation too.
I apologize, Abel, for losing my temper, but I don't like to be, I don't like, uh, we were not, we have not been satisfied. I'll say that. We might have been at the table more than anybody else only because of rec, the conservation commission also wanted to be at the table. They've never been invited.
Thank you, Dave.
Mr. President, I, Mr. President, I can't raise my hand digitally while I'm sharing a screen, but I'd I'd like to just make a couple of obs- observations here.
Uh, go ahead, Rob.
So I actually, we do have to get this done in four weeks. I mean, the app, the application is due on September 15th. Uh, three weeks coming, coming, it's now three weeks, I suppose. We do not have a whole lot of time. There are three ideas that have been described, discussed here this evening. Uh, the site out in front of uh South Road School, offsite, possible replacement of facilities offsite. And this idea of um a turf field replacing the multipurpose field uh where the tennis courts are currently uh indicated on this uh schematic, this site plan. The issue with regard to the uh turf field is that that's not going to be a reimbursable expense. We'd have to figure out how to pay for that um through other town funds. If that is in fact the best alternative, um, we may have to talk about uh an off project, project. Um, but there's no reason why, if that's what's in the best interest of the community, we shouldn't be pursuing or at least analyzing that possibility. Uh, so I think we've got three weeks. I think that um we can certainly figure out whether we can fit the tennis courts in front of South Road School. Identifying locations off of the property is really something we would want to get input from the recreation commission on. Because Dave's point is exactly correct. It's not smart to just, you know, stack up more facilities next to facilities that are already there. Um, there really ought to be some judgment made about where new facilities would be most beneficial. So we're going to need some, some thoughts on uh what offsite locations might make sense. And then on the turf, uh, the, yeah, the turf field or the um replacement of the multi um purpose field. Um, I can work with Terry. We can figure out what the costs associated with that option are and report to the council. Um, before uh we get to a final application consideration by the council on the 14th of September. So you've got that information and you know what we'd be looking at in terms of the expense involved there.
All right, this is Abel. Thanks, uh, Rob. I think we are clearly not going to solve uh this issue here tonight. And that's certainly not the purpose of this meeting. I I do wonder if, you know, we have in our current inventory of of properties, a spot that's logical for you know, those tennis courts um or fits them. So it, part of that conversation, if we don't have that land is where is that land? Uh, as I'm looking at this map here, I do see like parcels that look like there's no buildings and they have no access to road frontage. Um, are those, do those belong to us like? Can sort of see to the northeast of uh the track, the current track.
That's what I was kind of asking earlier, Abel, is like, what is the the goal, the overall goal? Is it the amount of available playing surfaces? And if so, have, can we reimagine the location of them or does it need to be in that that same single existing athletic facility?
We, I just want to say, sorry, we did um explore an option to locate the tennis courts in that area east of the um existing track.
Okay, is that, is that the area that was uh too sloped? Hmm, or is that?
Um, I think it was just more of kind of um accessibility of the public coming in and having to access those courts while a gym or the school was in session.
Okay. I see a lot of hands raised. Uh, I want to keep us moving along because I think there's more to discuss than uh this issue, but um I suppose we can take a few more, but if it's not new uh comments regarding this issue, then I would ask you to sort of hold off. Uh, but if you think there's something new uh that you want to say about this, um, we'll go ahead with that. JC, your hand is first. And you are muted at the moment.
I think she is saying that she's still up from last time.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Kate?
Um, so as as somebody who's also been sitting at the table, um, Dave has come to the table and he has expressed um support multiple times for Curtis Corner. He has definitely um tried to express whenever, whenever there's a new um layout with a tennis court in a different spot. There's usually a reason why it doesn't work. And I think that's the problem. Um, is while they're just kind of moving the tennis court around, trying to find a place to to stick it versus sitting down with the rec commission and actually looking at the full layout and together working to come to a common understanding of a place where it it could and should go. That's not totally disruptive because it's not just about the tennis courts, right? It's about, it's about the flow of the campus. It's about the parking. It's about um, do we need to transport students from here to there, which is one thing, one of the reasons why we want to be at Curtis Corner Middle School property is so that we can condense and and not have the need, we still will have need to transport students places. But the idea is to hopefully lower that number of students that we have to drive here, there and everywhere. Um, and to kind of make it more of a complex feeling. So what I would just propose is sometime, and and we said this this morning, sometime in the next three weeks, if there was a way to get the conversation set between, and and again, it's not necessarily been conversations at the building committee table. It's been conversations, like Dave said, offsite um with the architects, you know, walking through those aren't, those haven't been building committee meetings. Those have been outside meetings. Um, and I think we need to make sure that those happen. And to Dave's point is when we made the final point like this, these tennis courts aren't going to work here because there was a septic system. Um, it, there needed to be another conversation after that. And and that's, I think, what he's saying where in the past three weeks, that that conversation hasn't happened yet. We have a new proposal kind of being put out here. So if we can just kind of agree, like we did this morning and Rob, we put together kind of, and I know we're going to get to it and I'll stop talking so we can. But um, we put together kind of a slide that says, you know, this is what we're looking at, but we have these components that we really need to nail down before this can get approved. Um, or not approved, but can be kind of moved forward. Um, and the rec commission buy-in and understanding and working together with is one of those big pieces. So um, so that's kind of all I I have to offer, like, you know, I support what Dave is saying. I hear what Dave's saying. I keep telling him, I hear him and I understand why he feels like he's being ignored because it appears that way every time a new proposal plan comes out. So it it is very, it is very difficult and I understand his frustration and um, and I would like to to see us take his input and really make sure that we embrace it before we move anything forward.
Thank you, Kate. Uh, Bryant?
Just want to uh, can you hear me? Okay. All right. So the only other thing I wanted to mention regarding the tennis courts, and I think it's important, uh, especially for the council, uh, because currently I believe South Road is under council control, um, is that there, there could be a very good reason to keep South Road. And maybe one of the reasons is for more uh rec space or facility. Uh, we did look at moving the tennis courts to next to South Road and it was really, really close to the actual building, which would have been on top of the septic system, uh, like Kate mentioned. Uh, so I guess one of the questions just doesn't have to be answered today, but at some point, do we want to keep South Road School? Or not? Or do we want to sell South Road School? It's just something to keep in the back of your mind.
Thanks, Bryant. And Michelle?
Um, I I just want to make a comment. Um. Mr. Palazzetti, I I understand your frustration. Um, I also have not been able, due to other obligations, to attend building committee meetings regularly. But more than that, um, I'm embarrassed that an elected official would speak to you in that manner.
Michelle, uh, Linda?
Thank you. Just quickly and following what Bryant just shared. We had looked at tennis courts in many locations. We had looked at them next to South Road, realized it had an implication and then took a look at them a second time. And we adjusted them and that is, we have that site plan next to South Road as an option. With them, we adjusted the last time and that's actually linked off the school department's website, that plan. So we didn't formally select this site plan for tonight's meeting. And I don't want, I just want to make it clear, the superintendent did not say this is the plan and we are moving forward with it. And you can watch this morning's meeting if um folks don't know that. So as we step forward, there is, there, depending upon who we ask, you know, some folks have thought South Road maybe made some sense. And there is a redone diagram that we had um the engineer participate in. And I believe we spoke about it, not at this meeting this morning with the building committee, but the previous one. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Uh, okay. Um, one thing that did pop into my head as we were talking about other locations is, uh, you know, Matunik School has a lot of open land. I know it's probably used for other school activities, but um it does seem like we don't have a lot of play fields or tennis courts and so, I mean, there's Russo, but that's East Matunik. Anyway.
So Tracy, we're going to continue to have the rendering problem. Uh, trying to do this over the internet is going to be tough, but
Okay.
This is the rendering that we've got.
Abel, would it be okay if I just add one quick thing that I just thought of regarding the tennis courts? Um, the other important thing to realize as to why the tennis courts are really important. They're important to the town, but they're also important to the school department and for the kids in school. And I don't know the particulars and I don't remember the exact wording, but it's so that we can also uh from a, from a scholastic league side be able to uh have our tennis team play on the right sized court and have uh visitors from other schools come and play against our teams. So there's, there's, there's another side to the tennis courts as well.
Right. Thank you, Brian.
Okay, um, so I will go on to, this is the uh proposed floor plan for the renovated and expanded Curtis Corner School to go from the middle school to the high school. Um, I think it's just due to file size, the graphics aren't reading as well as they could. Um, if you go to the link or to the um files and download them later, you'll be able to see them in more detail, I believe.
Right, one more time.
Okay.
Tracy, would it help if you shared directly from your desktop or no?
I can try.
I I don't want to bog down the meeting. Just trying to see if there's a quick solution.
Yeah, I'm not going to get a better solution, I think, uh, from, from this internet connection. We're really going from RGB to my laptop to everybody else. It's just, it's too much for, the file is just too large.
And you make Tracy a host and then she can share her, if she has it.
Actually, Tracy doesn't even have to be a host to share. You just have to allow her screen.
Uh, so Susan or Tracy, do you think that it would be helpful if you were sharing your screen? And if so, Susan, can you make that happen?
I I can try. I can try and you can see if it's any better visibly.
Have you got the file?
Let's try it.
Okay, I'm going to stop sharing and you've got it.
Okay, share screen. Let me go to um. Okay. I don't know if it's any better. I can try to download it right to my machine. Yeah, I think I'm, mine's probably going to be the same graphic that Rob has, but but I can go through it. Oops.
Yeah, let's stick with you for now, uh, seeing as we've given the presentation, if that makes sense.
Okay, let's see if it'll. Okay, I think this is a little bit better. Okay, okay. Um, so zoom out a little bit. Oops. There we go. Okay, so um, starting, it's a light um underlay of the um existing plan, but you can um see here, this is the existing parking lot um off of Curtis Corner, which currently um you come in now and this is the um existing cafeteria. Um, what's being proposed is this will become kind of the secondary entrance or the student entrance and um buses and parking would occur in this area. Um, you would take the access road um that's there now that goes around the um existing district administration area and the primary entrance would be over here on the side. Um, as mentioned, there'd be a canopy here that ties um both the district administration and the new main entrance together. Um, so you'd come in here, there'd be a secure lobby, there'd be um the school administration area or front office in this location. Um, this whole area essentially is the new addition. So this would house So this would house your, kind of your larger spaces, um, that wouldn't be easily, um, developed, uh, in renovating the existing building. Um, this whole portion kind of becomes your, um, public kind of, um, access area. Um, you'd come in, you'd have access to the new auditorium, approximately seating, um, a thousand, uh, students or occupants. Um, your new gymnasium would be in this area. Um, this area would be controlled, there'd be, um, doors here, fire shutter here, and doors here. So this whole, um, area would be a large atrium that could be, uh, used for multi-functions, uh, pre and post functions could be housed here. We have a, a new music suite back in this location with a separate band and chorus rooms and shared practice rooms in the middle, um, with direct access to the stage in the back of the, the auditorium here. Also with, um, music instrument storage and overhead doors here, overhead doors that get you to the back of the stage in this location in a community room, um, right in the front, that would have a separate, um, entrance as well. Um, in this area would be, um, the, uh, guidance and support suite, toilet rooms and locker rooms also have direct access from this area out to the back of existing track and football, uh, stadium. This area here would be a makerspace, which also could be functioned as kind of a community room, would have direct visibility off of this, uh, new atrium, and then also utilizing the, one of the existing courtyards here um, to have, um, access for outdoor programs, uh, for, um, outdoor learning and, um, science opportunities. There's, uh, science and, um, steam, uh, classrooms located in this area. This is the existing science wing now, that would have just some, um, utilizing the existing classrooms as much as possible, changing some of the entrances to them, having, um, some, uh, learning commons and 21st century spaces here. Um, doing just a small addition on the front of the building for, to have some of the larger art rooms and taking advantage of the natural light. The existing, uh, gymnasium, um, as you can see, it's much smaller than the proposed gymnasium, um, but would be converted to the, uh, shop areas or the CTE woodshop kind of, uh, areas and taking advantage of the height in this location. And then um, continuing up and, um, opening up the existing, um, cafeteria, opening it up, having a student commons in this area and tying in to a proposed new media center in the large courtyard. Um, there'd be, uh, outdoor area here that could be used for, um, assembly area, um, different multifunctional, um, opportunities. The existing, uh, kitchen would be reconfigured, reconfigured, but in the same location. And then additional classrooms back, um, in here. Having this configuration and with the, uh, courtyards would, um, allow natural light and a lot of flexibility into this, this plan. Andrew Barclay from RGB is also on the phone, uh, on the call. I don't know if you want to jump in and say anything, Andrew, um, as it ties to the development of the educational programming comport, portion of it?
Yes, Tracy, thank you. So I, I just was going to follow up with, with some of the the work as you, when you walk around the, the school. So the light blue spaces are, are the actual, you know, classroom spaces, and they're broken into different segments for, um, relative sort of what was existing, and then how they're going to be re, rethought of or reused now. Um, so again, Tracy touched on the, the gymnasium becoming the, the CTE, uh, carpentry and woodshop labs, which provide some direct access to the existing, uh, parking lot now. So bringing in materials, bringing in, uh, supplies, and, and that function works still pretty well. The art classroom down on, and the, the wing right below that, sort of this pale pink, um, there's opportunities to, to go outside and, and maybe even create, uh, work outside of the building, uh, for, for the art and the allied arts program. The courtyards, the, the existing courtyard, sort of that trapped space that typically is not, um, always considered. We tried to maintain that there, that space is there, and so we can get good natural daylight into the classrooms, either the existing classrooms or any of the new classrooms that we're reconfiguring, but we wanted the, those outdoor spaces to be, to have a purpose. Um, and this comes with working with Frank Locker, and the idea that making them function, make them, uh, viable. So relative to the, the core, the center of the, the building where the, the multimedia sort of library space is, on good days, and, you know, when you have the, the proper weather, you can allow students to come out, um, use that, uh, amphitheater space or have multiple opportunities to engage outside, to use that space, have more of a reason to be outside, and to actually always have a view to the outside. And security-wise, it, it works pretty well, and that it's controlled. It's not allowing someone from the, from the outside to come into that space. If you drop down to the center, right below that, off of the main atrium space, we have new science labs. Um, their, their labs, um, and so that becomes like a science cluster or like science wing. And again, trying to take what some of the space, which was a former courtyard, and allow those classrooms to open out and, and use the outdoor space, uh, whenever possible for experimentation, um, or, or lab setting. But again, also, you have view, you have light, daylight, and you have, uh, internal view. So it becomes a very active kind of center of the, the building. It's kind of a heart of your building there. And, um, so there's multiple places along the plan that, that have, uh, points of engagement for students and teachers as well. We've deposited teacher, uh, collaboration spaces. One, Tracy, maybe you can show that purple to the, off the courtyard. Yep, there's one at the very end of the building, up near the, past the kitchen and the, where she was before, and then down here, right off of the sort of science wing. So we're trying to deposit places where the, the teachers have a place to, to, uh, have meetings, have conference to, to come together and, and work and support, but we didn't, we have placed them in multiple locations around the plan, so they're not located just in one spot. But in effect, you kind of have a triangulation starting. You have the guidance and psychology suite off this main sort of public corridor. You have one tucked in by the CTE labs and the science wing, and then you have one down at the other end of this, uh, I believe it's allied arts, it's your other CTE, like, um, digital art. Um, and, and two other, or actually five other core classrooms in that zone. So there's been an attempt to kind of equalize opportunities for students to get access to the teachers, teachers to have access to them, to other teachers. So there's cross-communication and collaboration going on. And, um, been thoughts of, of control, that the control points, um, of entry and exit are, are um, aware and are monitored and are secure. So I think that's kind of a quick overview of this plan.
Okay. I can go on to another plan.
Please stay. There's a bunch of us with our hands up. We're just waiting.
I couldn't see you. Okay. Um, I will, I think this is the um, is this my plan still?
Yes.
Okay.
Although I don't think it's the local version. I think that's
Not. Let's see. What happened? Um, do I have to download it again?
Uh, while you do that, um, Emily, your hand is raised first. You have a question about this particular schematic.
I do. Um, Tracy, can you just speak to how the public would be able to utilize these spaces? Um, I'm pretty clear on the educational aspects of, um, each of these areas.
Okay.
Then explained a lot, but I think that it would be really helpful to hear, um, how each of these areas, for example, the auditorium, um, you had mentioned that you'd be able to, that on one side there, you could close that off, so that could be
Sure.
used, but also the gymnasium with the locker rooms, um, how could that be accessed and utilized? With cutting, um, with, like, are we able to close the, the rest of the school off from that area? Um, and also, um, and another example I was thinking and wondering about, um, is the science wing. A lot of schools in Rhode Island do, um, like a STEM camp. Um, would that be something that we would be able to? Could we, in, in this building, close off different wings? Um, from the rest of the school for different uses outside of the school area, uh, school time?
Yes, so
Thought about, I thought about, I know that's been thought about for the, um, auditorium, because you said that.
Yeah. Yeah, so we can look at different, um, access points and, um, and control points. Um, so basically, this whole, uh, new addition could be, um, controlled and separated from the remainder of the building. As, as far as, you know, we mentioned, you could, you could have the atrium, you could have the auditorium. You can see there's not only the main access point here, but there's another access point here, and there's also access points in the back, so you could get in, you could have students coming and out of the fields and then come in and have access to the locker rooms here. Um, and then as far as you were thinking maybe for science or like a science STEM camp, again, um, this is a, a door here that could be opened, it's a horizontal sliding door, so it could be opened all the way. Um, and you could have this makerspace that's, has visibility off of the atrium, access to this courtyard, and then, um, the science, uh, rooms here, whether you wanted to give access to this portion of the wing and utilize this student commons um, as maybe like a camp or something, or if you wanted to, you do have, as you can see, different, uh, doors that you could then segregate different areas of the building. Um, just from the configuration, um, you would be able to have different control opportunities as to whether you wanted to have a wing or have them have access to the courtyards, um, but that, I think, and we could always add some doors if we needed to, you know, have additional control um, to look at those opportunities. But yeah, I think the way that it's separated, you could easily do that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, how could the, uh, community at large benefit from the building outside of school day? Um, and I think that's something we should be really thoughtful of. I mean, even the, sorry, my puppy is barking, um, over in the art area, for example, maybe, you know, members of the community could utilize that outside of school areas at school time.
Certainly, and there's, there's multiple opportunities, as you were saying, there are access points here, and you could, you could control that and just have access to some of these art rooms here. Um, we do have that community room here. We were thinking the makerspace, uh, room here would be very accessible for the community and for the public. Um, so there are different, um, opportunities for that.
I think maybe the Parks and Rec would be excited if we could put some pickleball lines in the gymnasium, because that's always really busy. So maybe we could add some extra pickleball in there, that would help.
Okay.
Bridge some gaps there.
Emily, just one other, one other answer to that question is currently, uh, Columbia Street does serve as our emergency shelter, and uh, this design actually has three or four discrete places that we could use as an emergency shelter. Uh, all of the orange areas on this are of sufficient size and have characteristics that would make them, um, usable, public, um, emergency shelter spaces. Uh, and in fact, having that scalability, you could use one as your primary, and then you can build on that if you need additional spaces, you go. So as we go through the design process, we will certainly be looking for, uh, the best way to configure uh, the security systems to allow for a portion or portions of the building to be used as the emergency shelter.
All right, thank you, Emily and Rob. Stephanie, your hand is up.
Thank you. Um, so earlier tonight, when Dr. McGar was speaking, he, he said that, you know, right now, our teachers, we don't have the space to be as flexible as our teachers are ready to be. And, um, one thing that this period of, like, distance and hybrid learning has shown us is that, like, flexibility is key, and the reality is, like, during the life of this building, we could likely find ourselves in a position where we don't just need the flexibility that 21st century learning requires now, but that we need to be able to pivot and be even more flexible. Um, and so I was wondering if you're able to share, can you share or describe um, some of Joe De Silva's, like, specific feedback, because I, I like, I recall in the original phase two that was sent back, like, it's just that it was as, it was as if the plan, um, it wasn't lining up with the educational program, programming that our district is committed to. And we've committed to providing spaces that are as flexible as our teachers want to be, like Dr. McGar said. Are you able to share some of that specific, like anecdotal feedback on how this is going? Or is that not something we can be privy to quite yet?
No, we, we certainly can. I can, or Andrew can, um, certainly the superintendent can as well. Um, so I don't know if you want to jump in, Andrew, or Linda, or, um?
Yeah, for, well, from my, my perspective of sharing this with Rod and the whole, uh, school building authority team, is that they have really appreciated, so as the plan was developed, it was shared with them um, on a weekly or bi, bi-weekly basis. And so as the development of it, uh, was brought forward, uh, they were brought along with it. Um, so the development of, say, the flexibility between the cafeteria, the extended learning spaces, and the, the core, the center, what we kind of call the heart of the building, which is this media center, was, uh, received really well. Um, the concept for providing access to the, the, the courtyard spaces and giving them a reason for being there and making them more, um, outdoor learning spaces, instead of just sort of a trapped uh, result of, of trying to get light into spaces, was accepted. Um, they've had opportunity to look at the, the auditorium spaces. Um, the, the space out in front of the auditorium between the gymnasium and the auditorium, that, that kind of open atrium or arcade space was seen as something that was very beneficial for, um, giving a place to allow students to pass. It's not just a corridor, it's a place to engage. It becomes kind of a student center slash lounge, student lounge. One of the strengths, I think, that they, they like, that the purple right in the center off of that arcade is, is the guidance suite, where you have the, the, the student services and support. And there was multiple, uh, access points. You can come into the corridor behind it, as well as from the more public kind of, uh, atrium side. They thought that was actually very nice, uh, that, that students would be aware that it's there, um, and have multiple ways to, to, to use it or get access to it. Um, I, I think the comments are that there was a lot of, uh, potential for using the, the corridor space, especially in the science wings, as extended learning space afforded a lot of opportunity for, for small breakout, for smaller groups of students to engage one another. Um, that was seen as very positive. Um, I, I don't want to speak for Linda too, but I think that, you know, she had a, a lot of influence on this, and, and it was a great, her, her, her vision for this and her teachers was, we were discuss, with this discussed with principals and teachers, and I believe even Chip is on tonight, so the, the administration has been part of the development of this plan. Um, and I think that's very positive in terms of letting them have a, a say in how this, uh, plan has been adapted, uh, to provide a new high school from the existing, the bones of the, of the middle school. So not that it's perfect, but it's definitely been vetted, um, by Rod and by, again, your administration currently, so.
I'll just, just for one second, because I had written it down in a notebook, and I have it in front of me. I'll just, just for one second, because I had written it down in a notebook and I have it in front of me. Ultimately, thank you, Andrew. Not only for the high school planning, but for all the spaces, we're really looking for the biggest return in terms of student learning, that's what we're here for. And we want these kind of central reflective spaces that are collaborative, that can be used by all. And, and so ultimately, that's at the ground of, of all of this, and we know that the Department of Ed wants that for us too, we align in that. They want us to consider many different learning modalities. Like a win for the Department of Ed for Joe is that we would have a space that we know that many different learning styles would be able to be accommodated, which does make sense. But I did write down, on June 25th, we had a meeting, and I wrote down, he had said, I said, you know, what could I share with the larger community for your feedback? And he wrote, he said, the transformation has been exemplary. So on some difficult days, I go back and read that. But I just am grateful for all, everybody's help and support in a very tight timeframe, in a very restrictive environment of, of Zoom.
Thank you for sharing that, like the specific feedback from him, appreciate that.
Thank you, Linda, and Stephanie. Kate, your hand is up.
Um, yes, so I want to kind of think of the time that we're in right now, right? So we're in COVID times and we are hustling at all of our schools to try to find outside spaces. So it's really nice to see these outside spaces that were already kind of created in there. Um, what I'm curious about, and I think you answered it, Andrew, but I'd like to verify. And I know, I, I heard you say it about the science labs where to bring the outside in and the inside out in the educational programs. But I'm also curious over up on the other side of the media center, there's the outside T, it kind of looks like. My question is, so two of our, two of our schools are very fortunate right now during this period of planning for reentry into this weird world that we're in, and all the classrooms basically have access to the outside in order to make use of, you know, making it a safer environment in the warmer months for our kids to be able to go back to school physically, right? So my curiosity comes in with these, that particular space, is it the same type of accessibility? And we don't have to get into the actual, like, where are the doors or anything? But are those rooms able to, again, have that flexibility of going right out into the outside? Because as we kind of know, from what we're hearing from the science world, is like the virus situation that we're dealing with right now, we'll, we'll probably see that again in our lifetime. Like, this is not going to be a one and done with COVID-19. So to have up a layout that has that kind of availability that we can embrace the outside whenever possible, depending on what we're faced with, not just educationally and programmatically, but, you know, to health concerns. So are those spaces accessible? Because I, I think of right now at the high school, we have this beautiful courtyard, and it's like you have to walk through this crazy little maze to get out of it. Those spaces, like, you can walk in and out from your classrooms, or you have the garage doors, or however, however it's built?
So there's, there's actually, and Kate, to answer that, in that section of, of outdoor space, it, it is narrow. But there's been a couple of conversations about, one, you have good view to it. There are a number of classrooms that do have doors out, but there's a, there's a topography change, a height change from one wing down into the courtyard in that that same vertical northwest spot of space. So it's an existing building. It does have a height change, but you do have access from the multimedia center out into that. And one, one or two of the classrooms do have direct access. And then there's, there's also been conversation about trying to consider that space as being a part of a greenhouse or a garden space, because it's somewhat narrow and restricted, but that you could still have access and let the students go out into that space and use it. So it's not as, say, as refined in terms of the program for the multimedia amphitheater area or the science wing, but there's still been thought about how that space is used. So, and that, and that could be developed even further. So
Okay, and I guess maybe that's on us really as a, as a school, maybe, Linda, for us to think of like what we're dealing with right now and our planning, like going forward to make sure we have different access points to being able to utilize outdoor spaces while we're creating these plans.
Yeah, and another area, Kate, that we didn't mention was we do have an outdoor space here in front of the existing cafeteria that would be kind of a senior dining outdoor area as well.
Right, a section of it is covered and another section is not, but again, due to weather conditions, you could use that and, and have outdoor dining, which is nicer, and, and, but still be secure from the parking.
Great, thank you.
All right, I think maybe we've reached the end of the comments on this particular, did you have more, Tracy?
No, I just couldn't see if anyone had their hand up, so I was, I was just waiting, that's all.
I just want to say, as one of the people that has like young kids that will likely step foot in these buildings, I just think it's really exciting, mainly because it seems like they're going to be the type of buildings that our teachers would want to teach in, so I appreciate it. It's exciting.
Thank you.
Abel, there is an attendee that's had their hand up. I don't know if you want to recognize them right now.
I was under the impression we, we didn't have community comment on this, is that true?
That's fine, I just want to bring it to Abel's attention.
I, yes, thank you, Susan, in, in the interest of keeping the, the meeting moving along, I think we'll forego it at this point. If there, if we get done early enough, we can have public comment.
Okay, so this is a rendering showing the new main entrance. So as we've discussed, and the great opportunities that we have on this, this site and tying into, to nature, we are keeping that theme with the new main entrance, so although you need the protection of the, the glass and the entry, instead of having bollards, we have planters and, and, and larger kind of landscaping items. So you have that natural feel, but still get the same security protection that you, that you would. And then also the supporting of the canopy with the light wells or to represent kind of ambiguous trees in that area. And then tying in, this is the existing administration building. So as one of the alternates, because we have not refined the pricing yet, but a way to control that is we have different alternates for different opportunities would be to re, put new exterior envelope on the existing administration building and tie that into the new canopy. So you can see that connects the entrance, the existing central administration building, and then behind it would be your taller auditorium and gym and higher spaces beyond it.
And then, Tracey, got to cut you off, but right, right as you enter to the, to the, if you approach this entry, you have the community room, which is accessed right off of this space, and that was something that's been brought up by ROD as being a real asset, and that it's accessible, it can be controlled independent of entering the school. So you can enter the school and come into the main security lobby and, and make your way into that space. But you could use that space for blood drives or say, an after-school project, or, or, sorry, project, group like Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, or food bank drive. So the community room actually does have more of a role, it's a student's, student community room during the day, but after hours, it has a, a chance to be used for something that's give back to the community, depending on how it's scheduled. And, and to Rob's point about having points of access to the community at, at, at time of need, that could, because of the, the nurse's office, nurse's, nurse's suite is directly behind that or attached to that room. It works, it's, it's small, but it still provides access to a, a larger space, has some type of medical supply or contact responsive sort of capability. And I think that's something that, that I know when speaking with ROD, they thought it was a really great idea to have a room that could be used off hours, a space that could be used off hours for, for the, the overall community, so just to bring that in.
Any other comments on the exterior rendering, or I can move, move along?
So is this the only, just the, the main entrance is the only thing we have a rendering for?
At this point, yes, yeah.
And I'm just trying to get my bearings, is that the, that's like the northern sort of end of the administration building there on your right, is your?
That's correct, yeah, really, this is kind of the, the backside, the back door of the administration building.
I think it's the west side, is that right? Yeah, it's the back where the, the, behind it presently, so you drive past.
Yes, the backside.
Uh, no, there are no other questions for that.
Okay. Um, so that's it for the Curtis Corner High School, so we can go into the what's proposed for the elementary schools. Um, and I can zoom in as well. I think I can zoom in, let's see.
Down, down to your right, there's the plus.
I see, it's under people's pictures here, okay, okay.
So the concept, the overarching concept for all of elementaries was to try and find a way to to provide a, a, a space for greater use, multi-role, multi-function, and allow teachers and students to have, have a space to, to meet and connect in. So the first real place that came to mind is the multimedia center, basically taking the library space, the existing library spaces or large rooms that are found, and, and convert them into a library, extended learning and multimedia function, so providing for flexible furniture, opportunities in different types of seating, soft, hard, start to look at trying to find a, a multiple lighting levels, different color, different use of different texture, making them much more of a, a, a place for engagement, either in small groups, one or two students at a time, or larger groups. Even multiple classes could be gone going in these spaces, so to try and open them up, make them more free-flowing, but also make them more visually stimulating. So examples of this have been drawn out, this is Peacedale. In the, the by removing sections or portions of existing walls and, and doorways, trying to make the space that sort of, again, the center of the building, the heart of the building, become a place where different types of engagement can, can occur. So you, you'll see this is sort of the theme throughout all the elementary schools, so.
Are kids learning in the wall over there on the left? That looks amazing.
Which, um, I'm not sure, over here?
No, the orange and the blue over here, all the way over to the lefty inside.
Oh, yeah, so I'll just, um, talk about that for a second.
It looks like the aquarium.
So those are proposed window seats, kind of that they could look through, there'd be a window in, in them here. And then in front of it would be kind of this seat that they could sit in, read a book or whatever, but then they'd be connected to the, the corridor that's surrounding it now, and also utilizing that corridor for different student stations, where, you know, nooks or that kind of thing. And then also, the, obviously, the whole theme and the educational fabric that's being woven through all the way from the elementary school through Broad Rock and then up to the high school is this extended learning area, flexibility, 21st century spaces, and different learning opportunities for every student, so knowing that we had some budget restraints at this time, focusing on the central space, the media space in, in every building, being able to provide that to students was, was the goal and the objective. Um, and then also, let me move up a little bit. Um, there's an existing computer classroom here now, so being able to open up the media center to get more use of this area, tie it in as kind of a, a steam space that would also support this entire media center. And a makerspace here with glass invisibility through these windows into the media center as well.
And then at the bottom, there's some concept for making the kindergarten space much more open and free, so you have blended opportunities for, say, more blended learning of, of the scale of, of, you know, thinking of the kindergarten, the children at that age and their need to move and, and use their brain and exchange and engage with others, so there are some concepts here for opening the classrooms up and to make one large classroom, multiple classrooms, or the ability to have a, a folding partition to close them down if there's a choice or a decision to make them more smaller or more compartmentalized, but there's a attempt here to rethink the kindergarten space and make it more viable by opening it up and making it more flexible.
All right, I'm not seeing any questions on this particular.
Move on to one of the other elementary schools then. Okay. Okay, this is Wakefield, I don't know if Andrew, you want to go through that?
So, keeping with that theme, this option I think is very nice, that it's, it's relative to the plan of the existing building, it's, it's closer to the core, where the gymnasium cafeteria is. It's taking two rooms that presently, you know, one was actually an art room, I believe, art space, but taking that space and joining them and making this into a multi-station, flexible engagement type of space. I really like the idea of having, I believe this was brought up, we're trying to find a theme or, or, for each school, so in this case, as an idea that you have a central tree that looks like a arterial sort of thing unplanned, but it actually is trying to find a theme, it could be water, it could be nature, it could be tree, but something that, that brings the students in and makes it unique and exciting for each, at each school. So in this case, we came up with the idea of having a theme of nature, the trees, working and, and studying, engaging under the trees. A lot of these small blowouts or flyouts are about work for like station rotation. work for like station rotation, again, scaled to the students. Different haptic or or engagement methods, either sound or tools or reading devices, brain stimulus type of of spots that are the movable and transformable, but that's the kind of idea here that we would take two rooms, increase one of them actually, but make that kind of the center, the core, as you enter into the school, you'd find that. And then from there, you could, you know, have, again, whole classrooms, let students work and engage. After school, it might also be a great place for the students to gather and wait till they're picked up. So that was kind of this concept for for Wakefield. And I don't know if you have the other one, Tracy, but same concept. But um, just down at the end, literally taking the old library space and turning that library space into a similar type of environment. This is at the far end of the plan. It's a little bit more remote. But the concept here was to open the corridor, put some windows into the corridor so you can see students passing and moving more visual stimulus. But in this space, again, having stations or places where students can move, stretch, climb, or engage in different types of functions, tool, a simple tool use, different types of furniture that can be moved and rearranged. So really kind of a fun sort of creative environment.
All right, any questions from council or committee members on this one? I think we can, Emily.
So how would we see this space being used in terms of how many children would be in here at a time? This, first of all, let me say, I am just blown away with the shape that these plans have taken. They are beyond impressive, really, really exciting. But I'm just wondering, we had discussed a while back that the classrooms would be smaller so that in we'd be, and I'm not sure if we're still there, so if we could just revisit that for a minute, that the classrooms would be smaller, more like a home base, and that kids would be coming out and able to collaborate between grade levels, or you know, there were multiple sections. So how many kids would we see being your vision being able to utilize this space at a time? And is that is that even still where we are? Is that still the thought? That the classroom would be more of a home base and that you'd be bringing classes together to collaborate?
Yes. Yes, this is a shared, this this is Linda, this is a shared space, much like a library media maker center functions as a shared space. We think about that concept and the same for this. And it's not that you can't have a time that you kind of sign it out for your class or for two classes or for, you know, sharing two classes or a project that's being done across a grade level, but but then it can also or or it can be done by different programs and utilized as it just felt like a the way to approach it for the elementary was not to necessarily select one teacher with one classroom and model that, but make a space that all in the building could have access to.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to make sure that everybody would have access to this and that there's enough room for multiple cohorts after COVID is, you know, after we're allowed to do that again, where multiple cohorts could come together and collaborate together. So that is the vision for this room. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. I believe that was the only comment on this one.
And then this would be West Kingston and Matunik, since they both have the same floor plan.
So they're they're sister schools, but again, a very similar concept of of taking the the core space and knowing the plan here, that that library space that was already, in a sense, shared, but rethinking it. Re re give it a facelift. Providing greater level of technology, give it a a new sense of scale by use of standing desks, lower seated desks, soft seating, hard seating, providing potentially these little nook stations for reading or or two to three, maybe even four students where they can get together and 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 have a conversation or read more focused. There's opportunity here to bring in storage, book storage and but yet mobile, you know, sort of trying to find a way to not get rid of the the textbook and and the reading in the library space, or you offer the Ford books and and that, but at the same time, offer opportunities for small presentations or smaller group interaction. And again, it's shared so that the space is shared by all the students. Again, I think to reiterate what Linda was saying, you could probably schedule it so that it could be used by one class or two classes at a time, but that in a sense, the way the school is configured, you have to pass through this space to get to the other classrooms. And we're also investigating the chance right off of this core media lab space, a maker space, a lab space by taking one of the classrooms and and opening it up to be more of that tool centric or or hand haptic type of engagement type of center. So we're trying to offer again, chance for flexibility, engagement, some type of fun theme color or like an event space that that doesn't age. And I believe this in in this school, I believe it was underwater or or water theme, marine theme. We can come up with another concept for this, the opposite school, so that each school has its own kind of theme. I think would be would be a fun aspect, and it's not going to be incredibly expensive to be able to come up with a color pattern, a texture pattern, or a graphic pattern that's used throughout. So that's the concept behind West Kingston and Matunik. Looking again for different types of lighting conditions, different lighting control of light. And then also because it's a an interesting space, acoustics, how would acoustics and set the sound level be controlled in this space? So those are the considerations going into the design of this center, multimedia center.
Right, are there any comments, questions about Matunik or West Kingston? Is that the the end of the schematics?
That is, yes.
So Tracy, you'll stop sharing, I'll finish up, we can finish up our PowerPoint.
Sure. You share? Stop share, whoops.
All right, so we wanted to do at this point was give Linda and Dr. McGee a chance to sort of describe how what we've just seen achieves educational goals. This is the education, the, these are the education goals that the school committee has articulated, and Linda, it's yours.
I'll just share that these goals actually were in the initial work that was done before I arrived. So the initial stage, stage one and stage two work. So if I can, you want me to, I was going to kind of read them, I just wanted to emphasize, yeah. Thank you. So if, so the first one, personalized learning opportunities for students. And we see the flexibility and the creativity that's allowed in the spaces and that it also allows us to be more student centered. If you think kind of high level with those designs that we just looked at, it is very different from, again, the cells and bells model. Giving times, giving students the time and space to move, create, and innovate, clearly ingrained throughout the all of the plans. But three is focusing on preparing students for real world opportunities and careers. We want authentic learning opportunities for students. And and we know that the spaces, again, allowing students to really step into the roles that they will have in the in real world, instead of sitting at a a desk in rows is is what we, where we see ourselves moving. Four is designing programs in pedagogy to meet the needs of the whole child. And again, just reflecting back quickly to the Wakefield, when we looked at that movement, where we're trying to consider all aspects of growth, not just not just a pure academic. Five, creating inspiring inspiring learning environments for all schools with near term emphasis on the high school education. And so we certainly do have a plan and a program that focuses on the high school. And again, these were the goals that I inherited when I came. They were in our initial stage two application. But it is, they, we have, we have said this was the foundation of the work we were moving forward with. They made sense with what we were focusing on with our educational programming. There, I know a lot of work and time was invested in developing them. And so we have followed with these goals. And lastly, valuing the unique diversity of each S K village by providing a community-based approach to global learning. And so again, focusing on the different schools, giving, we know that it's not ever touching every nook and cranny, but it will certainly have a level of inspiration for every every school in each village across the district.
So just speaking to the general idea of these these 21st century learning spaces, Linda and I had a conversation with Frank Locker, who's been a consultant on this project and has done work around the country and around the world. One of the things that comes out of that conversation is this realization that the quality and characteristics of an environment clearly affect social interactions and psychology. And this is what's driving a lot of this 21st century learning spaces discussion is just that simple realization. The nature of the space matters. It changes the way people interact with each other, and it changes the way that people respond to the opportunities to learn that are presented to them. School design experts, Frank Locker being the guy on this one, will point out that young adults and adults, children, young adults and adults all perform better, they learn better when the space they are in is conducive to positive positive interactions with their peers and instructors. So in this morning's conversation, the team talked about some of these things and and team teaching is a highly effective way of teaching. It's easier when the space is designed so that teachers can freely move about in a space and interact with each other, with the students and with the equipment that they're using. We heard a little bit as we were going through about the configurations allowing for the use of technology, and they're clearly being designed to allow technology to be integrated into instruction a little more seamlessly, rather than pulling out the old, you know, the old overhead projector and pointing it at a screen in the front of the room, you can actually use computer screens, you can use audio visual equipment in a space in a much more fluid way. So this is part of the design.
Can I, can I just share one kind of quick point? And I'm going to speak about it through the lens of a math teacher, former, a math teacher. When we know, we think about education and best practice, we think of the groundbreaking research in the last 20 years about how people learn. If we're going to talk about developing a school, we need to understand how brain-based research is and what it tells us. So when we say 21st century, it sounds so like jargon-ish. What it really is focusing on is how we learn as adults, as children, and we're not empty vessels which we fill. That's not how, you know, maybe back in the day, that's what we thought, we stood in front of a room and we lectured and we filled the empty vessel, the brain. That's not, doesn't work. What we know works as a, and as, for example, as a math teacher, what works the best is when students talk about their math learning. So in other, we want them collaborative, we want them in spaces. They don't need to be sitting in rows and desks, but they do need to be in an in a place, in a location where they can talk with each other if they're to really truly learn. And this, again, for one example in content is math. So we want to have a space that will support the research that shows how people learn. And and so that was at the foundation of the work and the continuing work that we do in the district.
Let's see, this this slide really comes right out of this morning's school building committee discussion. Folks wanted to make sure that we sort of touched on the idea of the alternatives. So much energy in the community conversation has been about why Curtis Corner as opposed to simply renovating Columbia Street. Dr. McGee this morning sort of expressed a number of things, and we'll let him speak to those, but in in summary point before we turn to Dr. McGee, the alternatives discussion really turns on this notion, the idea that, the idea of a complex, the the possibility of having a a high school complex that wasn't in a cramped urban environment constrained in in how it could grow in the future was a very appealing one, and the school committee had really wanted to explore that possibility to see if it was viable. We are running that to ground at this point before we have final numbers. It's starting to look like it's viable. The final numbers may kill that viability, but it's starting to look viable. And there's a funny problem about Columbia Street. The current high school is too big. It doesn't facilitate the interactions that are necessary. And as we'll see in the next slide, it's also funny in that it's it's too big, but in order to make use of it in in the way that Linda has described, you'd actually have to build additions onto it. It it's too big, but it would have to be expanded if you were going to create new interactive spaces. And there's no place to do that because there's not enough acreage around that building. And actually, the slide is now gone, so we're not going to be able to turn to that for the principal from the high school. But Dr. McGee, if you want to comment about the labs in particular, I thought that was a powerful example of the kinds of problems that you encounter and don't think could be overcome at Columbia Street.
Yes, thank you. So the best science labs that we have in the district are at Broad Rock Middle School. And then, and and there are some that are similar at Curtis Corner, but in a lot of those rooms are smaller. And then the, at the high school, we don't have science labs that are equal to the to the labs that exist at Broad Rock Middle School. They, we have one biology lab for hundreds of kids that are taking biology. We have one chemistry lab for the, a very similar problem. And so we're supposed to be doing more complex scientific experiments and exploration, and yet we have lesser facilities at the high school compared to that which we have the middle school. And I think that in order to, as as Rob was saying, in order to do that, we'd have to add on to these classrooms. We'd and the only way, and since the science labs are currently on the third floor, that creates a very large problem with how do we expand out on of those rooms to add the space that exists in our middle schools. By building at Curtis Corner, we're building these labs as in space that already exists, and we're able to actually upgrade our facilities without having to bust through very thick walls to pull that off. The other thing that I pointed out this morning too is how well-designed the auditorium is with access to our very strong music programs. They're right there, they're adjacent, they're they're basically the the auditorium becomes the same, becomes part of their, an extension of their classroom without having it traipse across the hall with with musical instruments. They're one in the same place. And that to me was really important. And the the gymnasium and the surrounding studios around that are actually very well thought out too, because in in a way that it doesn't exist right now at Columbia Street and really in, in a way that it doesn't exist right now at Columbia Street and really can't is everything's together for that department and they can differentiate for many different types of activities that they're going to be doing there. So those are things that we, we really can't do at Columbia Street. If we were to renovate the auditorium at Columbia Street, we, we wouldn't be able to make it the size also that the auditorium is being proposed here at Curtis Corner is as well. So those are just a few points that, that I, I wanted to, that had not been brought up yet that I wanted to address. Thank you.
Then we want to sort of wrap this up and, and then let you guys ask whatever questions must have not yet been asked. I want to turn to Zach though, who will walk us through where we are, which is where we've been. There's nothing new here. This is the capital improvement plan that the council and the school committee have seen before. Nothing has changed because we haven't seen cost estimates that are different than what we've been using as our assumptions. But a number of folks have noticed that the rates, interest rates on bonds are lower than we've assumed. We've assumed 4% for the last couple of years as we've developed this project. And Zach and I have been talking and thinking through some of, of the issues around whether that assumption is reasonable, whether that assumption could be changed, should be changed. And I'm going to ask Zach to sort of walk us through a little bit of that.
Sure. So as Rob said, the estimated project cost was, has been 85 million. Down is there would be a bond request of 78,665,000 done in two phases. Also, the component would be the RIDE page ago funding. That was the money that the state set aside when they issued bonds. They have a specific calculator that they use to come up with that number. And the number based off of 85 would be 6.3, which would be given, which we would be able to receive upfront to help get the project off the ground. And we would be able to bond less. The assumptions that we used, as Rob said, would be a 50% reimbursement rate from RIDE, a 4% interest rate, a 20-year bond with equal principal, you know, using interest-only payments in the first year of each phase. And as we spoke this morning and today, these are subject, these assumptions are subject to change due to market conditions. I mean, today we are in a historically low environment for municipal bond borrowing and interest rates. Two years ago or two and a half years ago, when you started this, this, these projects, 4% was the conservative historical 20, close to the 20-year rate from the bond buyer index. That number has come down. We have had conversations with the town's fiscal advisor and we would be working with them. If, as we get final numbers to start to rework and look at these assumptions. And as that happens, we will present them to the school, school building committee, school committee, town council and the public. So that everyone is aware of it and we do it in full transparency. But to do that now and start shifting with unknown final costs from cost estimators doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So we've held off until we have the final numbers and then we will go through and look at all of those assumptions. And rework them if necessary. But from a budget standpoint, we think this is, still remains a solid number.
I'm going to move on to, oh, there's that slide that I was looking for, Chip. So I am going to just go through this or have Chip go through it real quick, although I think he's, he's talked about the labs. I do want to make this point about the Columbia Street being too big and needing to be expanded one more time. It, it really is a weird irony. The building is larger than the RIDE standard today. So we really aren't looking at a facility that RIDE wants us to expand. But with the, as the examples of the lab points out, the configuration is not right. So you'd have to expand the area. You'd have, in order to build open spaces where you can do lab lessons without the, the walls, you have to actually expand the building. And we are also looking at an expansion of the building out the front on Columbia Street just because the facade and the aesthetics on the interior, the size of the rooms on the interior of that building are not large enough to be good learning spaces. So the expansion on a building that's already too big is a weird problem that we avoid by not renovating Columbia Street. All right. So what are we going to see change? We've gone through the whole project. We've seen, you know, sort of where we are, a little bit of where we've been. We've seen the general concept drawings. What's going to change between now and the submission date on September 15th? The cost estimates will come in, so we will have solid numbers. RGB has said confidently that this project can be done for $85 million. They have tried to stick to that number as they designed. I have every reason to believe that their work has been fruitful. But we won't really know how close to that 85 they are until we see a cost estimate from their cost estimator. The school committee last night approved a second cost estimation exercise to be done independent of RGB subcontractor doing a cost estimate. So we will have two cost estimates to compare and, and sort of get a good sense of how, how close to that budget we really are. Based on those conversations, we are going to have to have, in all likelihood, unless we hit the budget exactly, some discussions about phasing, value engineering, price elasticity. Do we have capacity because of the changing interest market or the, the interest rates in the bond market? We will review budget expectations and do an affordability analysis based on all of the new information that we have because of the cost estimation and the conversations that we will have to have with our financial advisors once we have numbers to be working on, direct, concrete numbers to be working on. There will be a resolution, there needs to be a resolution of the recreation facilities problem. The council has made it clear that this is a very important issue for the community. Many members of the community have made that, that perfectly clear. We're going to have to figure out within the next four weeks or three weeks now, how to deal with the recreation facilities. Recommendation will be made by the school building committee to the school committee regarding whether or not the project as designed is viable and, and should be pursued. And then the school committee will have to make a request to the town council for its concurrence to submit an application to RIDE. Outstanding issues beyond that, the reuse of Columbia Street is an outstanding issue that is beyond the four-week period. We will not have a resolution of the reuse of Columbia Street question. I will note for the council, for the school committee and for the public that we have put a request for information out to real estate redevelopers. We have had one inquiry, we've got a showing actually tomorrow and we'll have a showing again next week with another potential re-user of the property. But we are not going to have any, any concrete or well-developed ideas on what the reuse of Columbia Street is going to be. We will have to continue that conversation and that work after submission of an application. Public engagement continues to be a high priority and a concern. It's very difficult to get an entire community, all the information. We'd like to get them. So we're looking for ideas and suggestions from the committee and the council on how we might do public engagement before the submission of the application, if the council so chooses, or before and after submission of the application. And then of course, we'd like to hear from the council and the school committee on any other things that you think we need to be worrying about in the next four weeks. I'm going to stop sharing, stop talking and listen.
Thank you, Rob. That was a very long 45 minutes. But of course, that's, we got a lot of questions there in the interim. I do see a number of hands raised, so Emily Comiskey.
Um, so my first question would be about the sustainability subcommittee. I know that they were brought in and that they've been a part of this project. Um, I want to just confirm that they are going to continue to have a seat at the table to make sure that they have input about energy costs, what possible energy reimbursements or payback programs we would be open to getting with this project, making sure that our design is moving in line with sustainable ideas to help bring operational costs down. Looking at indoor air quality, we did, Tracy did speak to air quality and in the past, but I just want to make sure that that's still at the forefront of all the decisions that are being made as we reconfigure this. And on that scene, no operationally, if Linda could just speak, again, she has in the past, but this sort of feel, this meeting sort of feels to me like the updated FAQ for COVID where it's like, you know, one page where people could go to, to sort of see the update of where we are, like we talked about last night. So if Linda, you wouldn't mind just speaking a bit to the amount of square footage that we have now that we're paying for to operate each year and at the end of this project. And I'm not looking for specific numbers. But do you feel as the financial steward of the district that we're taking enough square footage offline that we'll be moving to a more sustainable place operationally? So if you could just talk about that. And then also if somebody could just confirm that the sustainability subcommittee does have a, and will continue to have a role as, at the table as we move forward, not only through the next four weeks, but moving forward as stage three, as we enter into stage three. So that's all I've got.
So I'll, I'll just share that kind of very simple math. We know that the current high school has about 235,000 square feet. That is not including Hazard, which is next door. And then we know that Curtis Corner with the addition, we, we know we're looking at about a difference of over 100,000 square feet difference. That will be actually reducing, taking offline. And there is also, I feel that there's a strong level of a really thoughtful use of space in the plan designs. We've tried to consider what used to be maybe traditional hallways passing and really how there are more nooks and, and ways to use those types of spaces. And if you think around about college designs and when you walk through different kind of student unions and spaces like that, that is how we'd like to be able to use those hallway spaces. So we have tried to work, leverage those. So not only do we have a lot less square footage, but we also have a really thoughtful use of the square footage. And then I, you, I guess, I know folks have heard me speak about this and a million times. And I did kind of a little one pager chart to compare the different sizes and the acreage and, but also took the priority one, priority two comparison financially from the Jacobs, which some people love the Jacobs report from, you know, a couple of years ago, some people don't. But the bottom line is there is an awful lot of square footage on Columbia Street that we, that, you know, mechanical air roof units, roofing, windows. So, you know, right there, we're looking at about eight million plus dollars. We're not including the fire alarm, the shut-off valves, like all of those priority one, priority two only. I think we were up to like 11 or 12 million dollars just in the bones and because it is large. So I'm very excited with this. I know we have a huge amount of work left to do with this. We are just dipping our toe in the water, but it just feels, it's well worth it. It, it's well worth it for us to go all in and see if we can make this come to fruition. And I'm confident that we can. And Emily, I'll share that the sustainability work has been, the committees have been brought in and have, Melissa Tow has done an amazing job kind of being our liaison with them. But I don't want to speak for Bryant or J C with respect to the building.
Linda, I would confirm that we, Melissa's been doing an outstanding job as our liaison. There's been a lot of communication, there's been a lot of emails. She's attended both the school sustainability meeting and also the town sustainability meeting.
So will they continue to have, so I know Melissa is the liaison. Will somebody like specifically Bob Moore has reached out to me several times? Will somebody from that Bob's committee actually be at the table? Well, you're finalizing this over the next four weeks and then moving forward? Or is Melissa the person that brings that back?
Can I speak to that quickly? It was our understanding that more of that work would be done in stage three. So they are on board, they are willing feet in, like they are excited about it, but it's more stage three. So yes.
Okay.
And just
kept hearing was that you wanted to make sure it was done sooner than later and that you don't, once you get to this design place, that it's really important that they are a part of that conversation before it's kind of too late. So that's, okay, thank you for answering that question. And Linda, um, yeah, it looks like the brand new NEC building that I teach in, in that URI Brown and Rick teach nursing in as well. It really brought me back, it brought me to feeling like I was there, which hopefully we will be again someday. But it looks, it looks just like the brand new buildings that are being built at the collegiate level. So that's exciting.
Thank you, Emily. Uh, Kate, your hand is raised.
Um, yeah, I, I mean, I'll, I'll make this quick because I, because I'm in part of the meeting. So I, I'd like to hear what the rest of the committee and the town council have to say on this. Um, the one thing that I would like to kind of push for in the next couple of weeks, and I don't know how it's possible because we are in a time crunch. But we haven't had a lot of community input and engagement. And we've talked, and we talk about it on a, on a regular basis. So we, no one on the building committee, this isn't like a surprise to anybody. The, the problem being is that we only have three weeks prior to submission. And while we're comfortable in knowing that, even though we're submitting stage two and stage three lends for more development, such as, you know, like J C said, more detailed planning with sustainability groups and, and whatnot. The community really kind of needs to be able to give, give their input after, especially seeing tonight's meeting. Having the evening meetings, we've certainly had more attendees, especially because we're in Zoom world. It's easier for people to tune in and listen versus sitting at the town hall for four hours on Wednesday mornings. So we've certainly gotten more, more community ears and a little bit more input than we, we had been getting. But still now, you know, you look at the, our participants where, you know, 49 people, 50% of those are part of our joint committees. So 26 attendees out of a community that's 30,000 large. So I think we really need to make sure we are reaching out in these next three weeks to our community and trying to push these plans out as much as we can. And, and not just get the feedback, but really accept the feedback and, and understand kind of what, when we were going over norms last night with the school committee, it was like own your impact and, and, you know, just because people are, are giving their feedback to us, doesn't mean we have to immediately go on the defensive and, and be like, no, 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 we put so much work into this. We need to hear them and we need to listen and, and we need to take in what they're saying. So I hope we can do that in the next couple of weeks. I don't know what kind of forum we can put together, a Zoom meeting, whatever it is. But I would like to think that we can let the community speak if they would like.
Thank you, Kate. Michelle?
So I have one question and then a comment kind of tagging off what Kate just said. Do we have any kind of a plan for another joint meeting between the town council and the school committee? And I know there's a short number of days. Another meeting before the Stage two applications submission date. Is that in the works or, or do you have it even, you know, you can't answer that tonight, but maybe you'll take it under advisement. I don't necessarily need an answer to that question. So my other comment. Sorry.
Michelle, I think you raise an important question and I, I do think it's a question for these two bodies to answer tonight. The council has a regular meeting scheduled for the 14th of September, which is the night before the deadline to ride. It is that meeting at which I anticipate the council will have the opportunity to. Vote on whether or not to concur on the submission of the application. We're expecting to have the cost estimates on the third of September. So between the third of September and the 14th of September, you've got some time in which we'll know costs. We're going to be doing a bunch of work about value engineering and all that other stuff, but we'll know costs. And the conversation between the council and the, and the school committee could be fruitful. So between the third and the 14th is when I would suggest you think about. Another meeting if you're, if you're going to do one.
Okay. So that kind of answers my question. And then the leadership will have to. Run with that. So, so I, I agree with Kate that. There's been a significant lack of community input. So I, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but. You know. We, when we started the facilities plan, and I think we're going back. Three and a half years ago, maybe four years ago, we had deliberate community conversations. Where community members were invited in for work sessions. Not just us as elected officials relying on community members to. Find out what's going on and find out when the meeting is and. And attend as an attendee, but actual deliberate community conversations. And, you know, we got a lot of input from the community and I think. From listening to some of the comments tonight. And the other thing that says to me that we have not reached out to the community enough is. Whereas when we had a plan. In the past to close Wakefield School, parents and Main Street businesses were all up in arms because they were going to lose business. Now let's face it, a lot of us right here are parents. None of us would let our kindergarten. First, second, third or fourth grader walk from Wakefield to school, Wakefield School to Main Street by themselves to patronize those local businesses. But now the plan is to close Columbia Street, which has students that are certainly old enough to walk to Main Street by themselves and then. Flip that coin because many of them have cars. And could drive themselves to Main Street to patronize those businesses and we've heard crickets. So what that says to me. Is we have not reached out to the community enough. And the conversation with Mr. Palazzetti tonight about the, the. The fields and the tennis courts and. So I have huge concerns. I, I don't think that. I, I, I'm, I'm just, I'm concerned about that. I'm, I'm upset with the fact that there has not been. Those types of invite the community in, listen to their input, have back and forth conversations, work sessions.
Thank you, Michelle. It looks like Emily, you have your hand raised.
I don't think that was intentional, but I, but I'm sorry, but I will say. I let my kids walk to Main Street all the time from Wakefield School. I'm wondering if I'm a bad mom now, Michelle.
I could put on my best teacher voice, Miss Kaminsky.
You have, you have really nerve. We do have 25 people in the attendees. I mean, I. It's not super late. I don't know what everybody's appetite to quote Mary Ann. At one of her last meetings. I don't know what everybody's appetite is to open up.
Have we heard from the town council yet?
Well, I mean, when, I mean, when this is done, I don't, I. Seems that 25 people are here and maybe they would like to contribute at this time.
Yes, I think. Let's get through the conversation at the table here. I do expect other. Council and committee members to have stuff to say. But, you know, I, I do think it's early enough that. We can have some public comment afterwards. So, Joe.
Yeah. So I have just a couple of questions and I don't know if this is for Mary Ann or Zach, but do we have an idea how much money has been spent so far on this project? On up to, you know. Today or last week or.
Joe, we have that number. I don't have it off the top of my head. I think it's like 1.1 million, but Mary Ann. Should be able to give us that number.
Yeah, Joe, that number is Brian's right, but also there was an offset of about $150,000. For the, there was a technical grant that we did get from Ride. Keep in mind that includes both the architect and the OPM in those numbers. And that's from the start of the project some years ago.
Okay. And then my second question, I don't know if. If the contract or the vendors can answer it tonight, but do we have an, an idea? I don't expect, we haven't finished the cost estimates that you're going to know exactly, but do we have an idea what we're going to use for. Or likely come down with for a square footage price that we're using. Dollars per square foot.
Yeah, Joe, this is Stan Bradner. I mean, we, we can't answer that until we, we see the estimates come in. Yeah, obviously that's the, the several million dollar question about where we think this is going to land, especially with rehab. You definitely have a, a wide spectrum of per square foot cost that you can see depending on the level of rehab and addition work that you, you do on different projects.
Right. And I can even imagine at, at the stage two point. On the rehab. That may be an educated guess that you don't know what you find till you find it, right?
Correct. I mean, you're, you're as good as the level of documents. That you're, that you've prepared and estimated off of exactly.
Sam, just something to add to maybe help clarify. I believe RGB did use some numbers in the past. On just some high level numbers of around 400. A square foot.
For new construction for the additions. Yes.
And then the other number we didn't have, I can't remember if we used one for that.
Well, we're kind of backing into that based on the cost and then what components we can do.
Okay. And, and then I just have a comment. And I hope nobody takes this as a criticism because it's not a, not a new behavior, but. So, and, and actually I watched your school building committee this morning. So I know how we got here tonight. With this PowerPoint presentation. But I have actually commented before that. It seems to happen more when we're dealing with the school department or the school committee and Linda, please don't take this as a criticism because. Previous administration did the same thing. We walk in the room and tonight we're doing it by Zoom and we get a PowerPoint presentation. And then we're read to, which if you give it to me two weeks ahead, I can read and I can read and I can analyze. And then you can give me a presentation and. I can't possibly. Sit down without full knowledge of what the PowerPoint presentation is. At six o'clock and give you real good feedback by nine o'clock. I'm still absorbing things people said 15 minutes ago. So. I've said this for six years. It would be helpful. It's happened in the budget all the time. We walk in the room, we get a binder and we get a PowerPoint presentation and then we're asked for feedback like. So where are you guys thinking? Where are you at? And it's again. I, I hope that it's a behavior that. That can change. I know that some things can't be done to the last minute, but. If things can be done a week ahead and council and school committee can get it ahead, it's just. You know, individually, we can analyze and maybe. Have questions and have that 45 minute meeting that you, that you promised.
The meeting was this morning, Joe. They met this morning.
Right. The, the last school building committee meeting though was a couple of weeks ago and that would have been the time that I would have tackled it. But again, I'm.
Well, I'll say this.
Try not to criticize.
You know, and I'll say this because I think it's a valid point. The reason we're meeting tonight though, is to make sure that we're not doing this to you. What you're describing. The week before or two weeks before you're asked to concur on an application. This meeting was strategically put four weeks before a question would be booked before, before the council, because we want you to have the opportunity. To digest and to Michelle's earlier point and possibly have the opportunity to have a follow-up meeting. We actually did think about timing this one so that there was an opportunity for everyone to. Process the information rather than make decisions, not having had a chance to digest it.
Right. I was, and I respect all that, Rob. My only point is if the meeting that produced this PowerPoint was done two weeks ago. I would have been much more prepared tonight, but it is what it is.
But my point. It is two weeks ago from two weeks from now. That's why we did it tonight.
Yeah. Okay. It's perspective. Thank you.
JC.
Thank you, Abel. I just wanted to. The issue of community engagement. I feel like we hold our meetings in public. So basically this project is discussed at school committee meetings. Town council meetings and building committee meetings. All of which are public and have community comment. I wish more people came to those meetings, but they don't. We are in a time of a pandemic. So we aren't able to revert back to the good old days when we could get everybody together in the gym or the cafeteria at the high school. With the big boards and show everybody what we've got. We can't, we can't do that right now. We've talked back and forth about, do we try to do a bigger Zoom? I mean. I Broad Rock Middle Schools. PTO for reentry went very well and there were a lot of people on that. Maybe we can do a couple of those. I agree that the community does need to, to have some input and to be made aware of what's going on, but. I also want the community to know that as we, the building committee have received information, it has gone up on board docs. And been attached to our school website. Now it's also attached to the town website. So it's available in more than one. Place. I think maybe it's going to have to be word of mouth. I think we as elected officials. Are going to have to go out into the community the best we can while remaining socially distant. And say to our neighbors and to our colleagues and to PC walking by our house on the street. Have you seen that new high school we want to build? Do you know anything about what's going on with the Columbia Street property when the high school moves? People need to start talking to their neighbors and pointing them in the direction for the information. I, I don't. Want the public or the community to feel like we as a school committee or as a building committee. Don't want their input because we do. We've given them information to the best of our ability when it's been available and we have provided, provided them with not one, not two, but three. Ways to communicate with us, how they feel about the project or questions. But COVID messed this up like it's messed up everything else and we're trying the best that we can. And invite your friends to these meetings. Share it on Facebook. Email it to your friends. Get people to come so that we can get the information out to more people.
Thank you, JC. Michelle, I see your hand up.
And just to respond to JC's comment, I'm not talking about that kind of casual spread the word among the community. I'm talking about a more deliberate approach and I'm talking pre coronavirus. Things like, you know. Put some kind of notice at the senior center. Not everybody is on Facebook. So, you know, not everybody has. Access to electronics in the newspaper. You know, to, to reach out to all the different facets of our community. Not. Rely on people who don't have children in the district. But they're still going to be responsible for paying the bill. Get, get them involved. And you know what? The time to get them involved. Has passed. I'm, I'm talking pre coronavirus. I'm, I'm talking. You know, reach out to specific. Communities, not just that casual talk to your neighbors. You know, I, I've been talking to my friends and neighbors and colleagues in town till I'm blue in the face. But that's not enough. So I, I agree with you, JC. That's what we need to do. We need to. Take the responsibility for talking to people, but including. People in the. In the conversation. The town hall has all our numbers that they can call our phone number that's registered. With the. Town hall and they can make robo calls to us when. Certain things happen when, you know, we had that water disaster with Suez two or three years ago. Every one of us got a phone call. Well, we can make a robo call. Want to make sure you're aware. There's lots of ways to reach out other than the casual conversation. So I agree with you. You know, talk to the relatives, talk to the neighbors, talk to the friends, but also make a deliberate. Attempt to include the people. That perhaps don't have kids in the district. But they're still going to be paying the bill.
So just if I could, Michelle, I like that idea about the robo call. What would you say? Would you, how would you phrase it in a robo call? Would you direct people to a website? Would you invite people to come to a forum? Like we aren't pre COVID anymore. We're smack right dab in the middle of COVID.
I know, but you.
What would you suggest we do? I like the robo call idea though, but what's the invitation when we get that call made?
So, so, and I'm talking. You know, this. This construction idea has been. And the moving of the high school to Curtis Corner. The discussion has been going on for a long time before we had coronavirus and we could have started those meetings then.
We can't rewrite history.
No, I know we can't rewrite.
You only can move forward. So.
I know we can only move forward, but. I, I don't know what you could say in today's world with the robo call when you've got four weeks till the stage two application is due. Maybe advise them the stage two application is due on September 15th and we plan on submitting it for. With the, with the plan of moving the high school to Curtis Corner Road.
Rob, is it something that we could do robo call for like the next group meeting that we're having like this?
So we cannot use the emergency system. That's not, that's not a permissible use. We, we can look into other. Other sort of robo call systems. There are companies out there that do that. But the emergency notification system is specifically, we're, we're specifically prohibited for, from using it for non-emergency reasons. And the reason is they don't want people to get sort of the boy that cried wolf. Mentality around those robo calls. So those calls, that system can't be used for this purpose. But we'll look into it. I can check with companies and find out, you know, what it would cost if there's a benefit to doing it. We could do it.
Because I think the bigger, the bigger point being is, I mean, the school could do it, but now we're only hitting school families. And the bigger point is it's not just about the 2,800. Kids and their families. It's about the 30,000. People who live in this community of which probably 60% of them are going to be paying the bill. Maybe more than that.
I see Sam Bradner's hand up.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Just a comment on public input or some perspective that we've seen in other communities. Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just a comment on public input or some perspective that we've seen in other communities. And it's a little bit different here, but usually the the bond initiative and the stage two are somewhat tighter together. So you kind of have this flow out of stage two submittal right into the bond campaign. Uh, and it's what we had talked about, kind of, if we rewinded this time last year, we had talked about that kind of being a a parallel activities that would kind of launch, you know, together to kind of get to the bond vote. So I I I think it's a challenge here because you have this kind of stop point and then you're not gonna go to bond until, you know, sometime in the spring when you would have a, at least from our experience, a very significant public information campaign around the project and the project finances and the whole, you know, all the information around the bond. You know, our experience is typically that we see a lot of engagement during the visioning process, which I know has happened now, you know, two times or one and a half times with the effort that Linda just recently did, but also all the hard work that was done a couple of years ago. And then and then there's a lot of work that the building committee does to get that submittal in place and get it get it submitted. What what we've seen is usually that's happening at the building committee level, the school committee level, and then the town council level as far as that public engagement side of things. Doesn't mean that you shouldn't be considering other aspects, but just wanted to share at least what what we've seen in in other communities as as we've gone through the process.
Thank you, Sam. That's helpful. From my perspective, I do think, you know, the last time there was a lot of public input into this process was quite a while ago. Some of us who are here as part of this meeting were on their respective committees and councils. And the plan was a lot different. There was quite a bit of consensus around, uh, continuing with having the high school at Columbia Street and closing Curtis Corner. So it I think it is, it's problematic that we never did significant outreach to the community around the idea of relocating the high school to Curtis Corner. You know, I I've heard, you know, tonight that there were some things that were impractical about the Columbia Street location, but I do think that probably those could have been overcome with some of the creative thinking that we're still need to do at the Curtis Corner location to to make it fit into that space. So it's it's unfortunate. I think, you know, for better or worse, I I don't think we have enough time left before we need to make a decision on September fourteenth, uh, whether to move ahead or or not. So one question, um, that occurs to me is, you know, say, September fourteenth, you know, we we have the cost estimates in hand. Maybe we've had another opportunity to have a conversation between us and go over some details about costs and and, you know, to a greater degree. We decide to pass it. Is there opportunity to amend the submission after you've put in, you know, stage two? Like, like the parks and rec concerns, like we might not hammer those out before September fourteenth. But I I do think that there's gotta be a solution somewhere. You know, I, just off the top of my head, you know, do we need the administration building still at the Curtis Corner location? Can we get rid of that? Put parking lot there, move the parking lot from where it's interrupting the the water services there? You know, maybe create a little more space for tennis courts by doing that and have the administration somewhere else like Hazard Building. But, you know, I I think it's a little late to come up with those new plans potentially before September fourteenth. Uh, so is there the possibility if we submit, you know, pretty much what we've got here uh, with cost estimates that we like, can we go in and and tinker around with it?
I'll I'll weigh in and then maybe Tracy again, but I would say let's just take the tennis courts because it's been kind of a point of of discussion. If all of a sudden there was a or decision, say, to move them from what was shown in this proposed plan to South Road or to another location on property, I don't think Ride would see that as a significant alteration to the project scope and Tracy can weigh in, but i- if you got rid of them, would they look at it differently? And I think would your athletic and rec commission look at it differently? But if you said, you know, in the stage two, they're here and then we want to move them over there. I I I think Ride is very accommodating. You do see a lot of evolution of the plans, even when they kind of hold to the what was in the stage two. There's there's gonna be change that happens through that process. Tracy, I don't know.
Yeah, I was just gonna say the same thing. We've mentioned that, um, the plan is still fluid. There's gonna be changes as you develop further. If you were to relocate, say, the the tennis courts or something to a different area on the site, Ride would consider that still, they were shown on the property, they were shown in the project, that would still be eligible for reimbursement. Something like moving the district administration to Hazard, I would say would then jeopardize some of your reimbursement because it would only be reimbursable, um, as part of a school building. So if you were no longer going to use Columbia Street as a high school, but you wanted to relocate central administration there, that cost would no longer be eligible for the fifty percent reimbursement. That would be a more significant change that deviates from the plan that you submitted.
Right. But just for put that, to put that in context, all we're contemplating possibly doing is changing the facade on that building. We're not talking about major renovation of administration.
That's correct, and that's an alternate as well, or a separate line item as well.
Well, if we were to do admin, uh, building work in the current location, that's on us. It's not part of a school building. And if we were to do it at Hazard, it would be on us as well.
If you were to include renovations to the district administration building as part of this submittal or in a future submittal, you could get reimbursement on it if it's part of the, um, on a school campus.
Right. So like, like the idea I threw out there, like if if we change the plan to have part of, you know, this next submission be the demolition of the administration building to make parking available for the new school facilities, I would think that that would be something that would be reimbursable, but like, am I thinking of that wrong?
Sam, this is Brian. Can you, uh, talk about what happened in East Province? Maybe that might help explain.
Yeah, I mean, we're our plan from stage two to 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 stage three changed significantly. The building and I think we actually even included it in our interview, uh, information and in our proposal information for when we interviewed for this work. That plan was, and it was two different architects, so that that's a one one other reason. But the the plan and the 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 building were modified pretty significantly through the process. I mean, they kind of sat in the same point on the on the campus. But we did go through a pretty significant change through that process. And and we were able to have that still meet the the kind of the expectations of the stage two submittal. So there is wiggle room. But again, I, you know, I think Tracy probably has more more, uh, experience with the tactile side of what will flip, you know, flip you into a a true variance versus what's kind of an allowable change. Because it's not only the physical plan, but it's also your ed spec that you don't want to have significant shifting on your ed specification that all of a sudden shows deficiencies or overages in in, you know, the various categories that are on there.
Right. Ride considers the application and approval by funds per school. So if you're moving something around the site or you're moving the a room from one side of the building to another, that's just a kind of a development change. If you're moving to a different project where you said, instead of putting additions onto Broad Rock, we want to put them on to, you know, one of the elementary schools, that would be a different project. That could not be something you would could do without a new application.
So Tracy, specifically to Abel's question, though, if, uh, the plan were to demolish the admin building and put parking there, would the demolition and parking be, uh, reimbursable? Should be.
If we showed it now, if it went in with the submittal now, yes, it would be part of the plan, yes.
Any work done on a new headquarters somewhere would not be unless it was part of a school building.
I'm sorry, uh, the other thing about East Province, they ended up getting approved for a certain amount, right? But then ended up deciding to spend more as a community without going through Ride, or am I?
No, they held the, they held the number.
Oh, they did, okay.
Yeah, yep, one eight, the one eighty-nine five.
There have been districts that have been given an approval by Ride and then changed the funding. Anything above what's approved by Ride is not reimbursable.
Right. Okay, uh, any other sort of final questions from council members or committee members what we've heard tonight? Michelle, I see your hand is up again.
Yeah, I just would like to like finalize like my comments before. I just would respectfully request that the leadership of these three groups, the council, the school committee and the school building committee, do something different in the future, even if we're just notifying community members that perhaps don't have any stake in the schools, notify them of our meeting times and and days. And while we're, um, virtual, you know, that fact and when we, if we ever go back in person, um, the place, um, in some way, other than just, you know, email electronics, I think that we need to, we need to make that effort. You know, the the school building committee is meeting, um, on Tuesday, such and such a day at such and such a time and we will be discussing, you know, fill in the blank, I think. And and we can't be, um, relying on community members to, that are not involved in the schools. You know, I I'm, I wouldn't perhaps know about all this stuff except for reading the narrow against the times, except for the fact that I'm on the school committee. So, um, I I think we need to to make that effort going forward. As someone said to me earlier, we can't rewrite history. That's true, but we can certainly do it better going forward.
I I I'm sorry, I have to ask. I don't know how we do it better. We we notice every meeting. Every meeting is posted in two locations. Every meeting is published on the Secretary of State's website. The agenda for those meetings are published. We do talk to the folks at the newspapers. The newspapers do publish articles about the meetings and and even the next meetings quite often are are indicated in, uh, those articles. I I don't know what channels are available to us other than those. I I'm really at a loss to understand how we would do better. We can't do TV ads. We can't do radio ads. We can't, I mean.
I wasn't even thinking of those types of things. I was thinking of more local things. When we started the school facilities discussion years ago, um, we had, um, we reached out to, um, we reached out to, um, the senior center, the churches, that, you know, we 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 got creative with who we were talking to because not everybody is on Facebook. Not everybody is, um, online.
Engagement. This isn't something that you can force anyone to do.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying force them, but notify them.
Michelle, if you don't mind me jumping in, one of the things, I think what what Michelle is trying to get to, one of the things that we did do was, and and most everybody in this, actually in this meeting was was part of it, is we did these, we did the visioning meetings where we had, uh, like three nights and there were like a hundred people in the cafeteria a- and whatnot. So I think to to Michelle's point, in order to get those people to the table, we we literally sent them invitations and we 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 targeted businesses and community members who we knew had long
The visiting phase is over.
And so, and so I, that's all, I think, Michelle, um, and and Alicia, I'm not trying to say we need to do that again. I'm just saying that's what she's trying to get to.
But targeting, targeting doesn't solve a problem. Targeting identifies who you want at the table.
Going forward, that's all that she's trying to say is we were able to bring to people to the table.
I think I understand what Alicia's saying, like you can't force people to respond. Just because they're not responding or showing up does not mean we're not noticing. Like, I do think it's incredibly important from a community communication standpoint. But, um, I mean, even just identifying that, like, people were sent invitations, you know, and businesses were targeted. That doesn't, that's not open. That's not open, transparent, wide open. All feedback is welcome to me. It's my thought.
And so I would say
I fear, I fear greatly that if we don't change our ways for including more people from the community who, as I said, they may not have kids in the district, but they're going to ultimately pay the bill. If we, I I fear this. If we don't include them more and let them know what's going on, no, we can't force them to come to the meeting. But if if we come up to the bond issue and they and the community votes it down because they didn't know enough about it, at least we can say we made every effort to include everybody, not just the school community.
Michelle, I kind of remember, um, at at some of the building committee meetings in the spring, um, in the beginning of the summer, Sam talking specifically about this and about, um, so maybe Sam wants to speak to it. About this is before the bond, this is going to, there's, so from now up until the bond, there will be a huge communications piece and, um, Tracy had spoken to it as well in the past and what that entailed. So I'm wondering if that is yet to come. And if Sam has anything that he would like to say to that, um, I think everyone hears what what you mean and it is important. But, um, as far as I understood from those building committee meetings in the spring and the early summer, there is definitely a plan to make sure that the community knows exactly what they'll be voting for and what they'll be paying for.
Yes, and I and I agree, um, that we want Sam to weigh in if he's got experience with this. But I think this outreach shouldn't wait until after we submit our stage two. I think it should have been going on for a while, but it hasn't. We can't rewrite history, but we can do something different going forward. Rob Zanetsky said that excuse me, that you knew that there was, you were gonna investigate ways of making robo calls. So that's that's one step. And then Sam, if you have other input on how we can do this, I would greatly appreciate it, hearing it.
Thanks.
President, if you want me to respond or?
Yes, please.
So, yeah, I think when when we were still anticipating this aligning with a November, um, bond vote, that's when we had, at least in our schedule, kind of at a high level, we had talked about multiple community forums that would allow for discussion around the project and 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 all the details around the bond process. Like I said earlier, those two things are now disconnected, so it doesn't achieve the short-term goal, I think, that Michelle is referencing. But that's how we've seen it happen in in other communities where you do have a series of community events leading up to typically a November, uh, vote. Usually start those right after Labor Day and you kind of ramp up through that September, October, uh, timeframe to ensure that you've you've done a lot of communication with the community. And and sometimes you have a different theme or, um, kind of information piece that's at each of those three forums. Maybe the first one's about the plan, the next one's about finances and the third is about, you know, maybe it's a roll up of everything that you've you've talked about already. So that's what we've seen in in the past and we've typically seen those with a communications, uh, kind of consultant that we've worked with, uh, in several districts, uh, because they really understand how to roll out that process. how to roll out that process. They understand how to get kind of earned media and and just think through the best way to 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 have that outreach happening on as broad a level as possible.
Thanks, Tim. So, you know, what I hear, Michelle, I I understand that it probably would have been a good thing to bring in visioning conversations around the Curtis Corner site a little bit earlier in the process. That is no longer a possibility. We need to solve this here at the table in the next few weeks. And then following that, assuming everything gets approved, then we would begin to do that community outreach. One thing I will say that, you know, I think it is a good idea that we meet sometime after we get those cost estimates. I will suggest that, you know, we do it as a town council, whether or not, you know, we can get participation by school committee and the building committee. It just needs to happen before we get to September fourteenth. So I look forward to that. I do want to say thank you for putting this presentation together. You know, I think I've taken a step back from the school building committee process, sort of have to. Otherwise, we'd run into Open Meetings Act violations. So it's good to get caught up a bit, and there's certainly a lot of more details that I need to dig into before we get to September fourteenth. And there's a lot more details for us to learn before we get there. So that will be the process going forward. Stephanie, I see your hand is raised. Would you like to say something?
Yeah, I just, just kind of writing off of what Sam Bradner just mentioned. I can't recall exactly what month it was. It was, I want to say January or February, when we were still able to meet in person. Part of an approval of like a contract extension or change, it included communications work that was strongly recommended to us by Peregrine and and RGB. And there was some discussion that evening as to, you know, is this, is this communication, is this community outreach? And I think, you know, it was like based on the lens that you were looking through, some people felt like it was like marketing, like we were selling something. But as Sam mentioned, it really was for that outreach piece because everyone has so much on their plate. And this, the magnitude of this project and what's being asked of the community to support it is very great. And so it's perhaps something we want to revisit because that was looked into, like we got pricing on it, we had a recommendation of a consultant to work with, and we're finding ourselves in a position where we wish we had spent the last several months effectively communicating. And maybe now we're seeing that there is a reason to engage in professionals when it comes to proper outlets for communication. It's not selling or marketing, it's just utilizing all the avenues we have in order to effectively communicate what's going on. So maybe it's time to reconsider that. Thank you.
Stephanie, if there are no other comments, you're in the meeting, there are a couple of hands raised from the public. Do I see any final comments? Okay, so we will go to public comment here. First on the list, Bob, you have been very patient. It's been raised for a good hour and a half anyway. So if we could bring him in here, great. And Bob, just state your name for the record. If you want to be seen, there's a little video camera down in your bottom left hand corner. We could see you. You are unmuted.
Bob Kavanaugh, I'm the former athletic director for the school department. I was also a teacher at Curtis Corner Junior High for fourteen years, and I coached soccer for thirty-three years. For the last several weeks, I've been getting a lot of calls and emails asking about the Curtis Corner Playfields project. But there's one thing I'd like to comment on before about the present high school on Columbia Street in regards to physical education and athletics. All the playfields in the town, except for Tucker Town, evolved because Old Mountain Field was overcrowded and unsafe. We had two students hit by cars, one on Route one oh eight and one on the bridge on Church Street. One was a field hockey player and one was a student coming back from a physical education class. Some of you may remember that when you were students, we actually had to have teachers standing out in the road with stop signs to get the kids safely to physical education classes. I went to Chief Vespia and we had Church Street changed to one way. That's why it's presently one way. Because there wasn't enough room for two cars on that bridge, never mind two cars and students going back and forth to athletic events and to school for PE classes. Arthur Campbell, when he was the superintendent, actually went, we went to the state and we tried to get a walkway over the top of Route one oh eight. They said no, because there were too many stoplights already. That was even before the Broad Rock stoplight was put in there. They wanted us to walk down to where Job Lot is now and cross the students to class there, which would have meant crossing another street to get to the stoplight to cross safely across one oh eight. So all of our ideas were rejected, and it's been a major problem there for years. That's one of the reasons why we moved or I moved all the athletic events off of Old Mountain Field. At one time, all we had was Old Mountain Field, we had nothing else. That was for every baseball team, every softball team, field hockey, boys soccer, girls soccer, you name it. That field was in constant motion with thousands of people around. We had great support and cars all over the place. We caused traffic accidents when balls went in the road, you'd hear the the brake screech, and then you'd hear the crash. So we had conversations for a long time about what we were going to do. And Arthur Campbell had me do a research project and compare all our facilities to our neighbors and compare them to the rest of the state, and we were at the bottom of the barrel. So everything evolved from what was going on at Old Mountain Field. Everything after that was a joint effort between the town. Back then, we had the Recreation Commission and we had the School Department, and there was no, the Recreation Commission more or less was in charge of all the hazard trust and the programs that went on under that. Did I lose you? No, okay. So everything evolved as a joint project. Some of them were done with school bond money, some of them were done with town bond money. Some of them were done with operational budget money from the Athletic Department. If you go to Old Mountain Field, the top tennis court up there was not there. Our tennis, I'm going to give you an evolution of the tennis courts. I hope you can bear with me because I think it's important. Our tennis teams at one time went up to University of Rhode Island and sat and waited for their tennis teams to finish practice so our kids could practice. That's where we had all of our matches. The only tennis court we had was one tennis court at Old Mountain Field, the lower court. And then the courts over at the Guild were built, but we didn't have any courts where we could have competitions. We didn't even have enough courts to practice on. So a joint venture was, the money was split between the School Department and the Recreation Department to build the upper tennis court at Old Mountain Field and to refurbish the one down below, those two courts. Then we had Curtis Corner. Curtis Corner had several additions, and one of the additions, I won't go into this too much, but the community gym evolved from a school addition project where they were supposed to expand the gym at Curtis Corner. They were going to make the gym into a media center and then put a big gym in the back. Well, that was discussed back and forth, and at one time, that gymnasium was going to be put behind South Road School on that piece of land. But that was discussed even further. We had three bond issues before we built the community gym up at, off of Broad Rock. The tennis court. When you look behind the administration building and you see that tennis court, the parking lot in front of it was the was the hammer throw. That's where we had the hammer cage. And Curtis Corner as an athletic playfield evolved from this. That project, that piece of property, the diamond property, was bought to become a school complex someday, but it wasn't, it was deemed not suitable along the way. So Arthur Campbell came to me one day and he said, we're going to put a new administration building in. He said, you need to get rid of the hammer cage because I need it for a parking lot. So I went to our track coach, Don Drum, at the time, and I said, Don, find me the best hammer cage blueprint you can find. And we put the hammer cage out in the back, out in the middle of the Curtis Corner Playfield project with school money, operational school money. I've been asked to explain all of this and who paid for what. Well, a lot of it was joint, a lot of it was school, and some of it was town. The tennis court itself, that was put up there with one of the projects, and that tennis court was built for school competition. But it, believe it or not, with the success of our tennis program, that wasn't adequate. And if it were not for Broad Rock being built, okay, with that beautiful facility we finally put over there, tennis facility, Curtis Corner today would still be the school tennis court for our competitions in the spring and in the fall. But with with Broad Rock being built, that was still used by the School Department for PE classes and for intramurals. But it was no longer used per se for school competition, and we did have school competitions there for many years. That tennis court is actually put on a field that was the, one of the first soccer fields. Behind that school, that was, that was a soccer field, and it was one of the worst baseball fields you ever saw. It wasn't even worth practicing on. And we were told one time we had a game there by the referees, if they ever had to, we ever had a game there again, and they would make us forfeit. So all these things together started to boil over, and we needed facilities. So when we went into the Curtis Corner project, we went into the Curtis Corner project as a school project to put our, now, when you think about Old Mountain Fields, we had JV baseball, high school baseball, Babe Ruth baseball, men's league, you name it, all on that one baseball field. So we needed these other fields, not only to have the schools use them, but also the community. So we worked on this jointly. And it really upsets me to see that people are saying, oh, you're taking this away from me or us, and you're giving us this, and you're giving us that. That's not the way it worked. Okay, the way it worked was everybody sat down and they said, okay, what are we doing for the betterment of the kids? Okay, we'll, we'll come to some conclusion. We didn't always agree on everything, but we always got things done and we did it in a uniform fashion. And that's the way I hope things go forward from here. But we also looked at putting the tennis courts at one time behind Curtis Corner, not Curtis Corner, behind South Road School. So that was looked at there as well. The baseball fields up in the back and the softball field up in the back, believe it or not, those don't look anything like they were on the drawing board. That whole plateau up there is manmade. That was manmade because of all the complexities of the ledge back there and everything else. But as far as who controls those fields, who built those fields, I personally scheduled all of those fields after they were built. I scheduled every rec group, every, with Kathy Parker. I scheduled every youth group for practices. I scheduled every school game, practice, everything there. And then the School Department and myself, we couldn't take care of those fields as far as lining them, fertilizing them, making them, you know, top shelf like they should be. So we came to an agreement. There was a contract, I don't know if it still exists. There was a contract with the Recreation Department and the School Department that the school would assign all the uses of those fields from September to June, to the end of June, and that the rec department would have control and schedule those fields in the summertime for their programs. And we got along fine, and that happened for years. And when Broad Rock came online, okay, basically, we did the same thing. I'm the only one left, I'm the only person actually that was on the Curtis Corner Playfields project from start to finish. Other people came and went. We had different recreation directors and Broad Rock, that was different. We had basically the same committee the whole time. It was a joint committee once again between the the town, and it was built because of the schools. Okay, Broad Rock schools hadn't gone in, those tennis courts would not be there, the field would not be there beside it. I'm just making that point because I've been grilled to death about that for the last two weeks. And it's like, who owns what? Who's in charge of what? Let's face it, folks. We're all taxpayers in this town, and it comes from the same pockets. And, you know, until you people come to grips with the fact that everybody needs to get along and that everybody should get along because it's going to benefit everyone and not whose turf this is and whose turf that is. You know, that's not the way I grew up in this town, and I hope that, you know, that new attitude that I've seen in the last few weeks with the phone calls that I've gotten continues. I hope we go back to the old way. Maybe I'm old fashioned. That's why I stay off Facebook. Somebody mentioned Facebook. You know, I don't, I just don't like what what I see nowadays. But as far as, far as those facilities go, it was in our minds, it was always a joint thing, not who paid for it, but a joint thing, although some were school projects and some were town projects and other projects were paid for. For example, the lights at the Curtis Corner Track area, football area. Those lights were paid for, the first, I think it was twelve thousand dollars was paid for by the Athletic Boosters Club. Okay, so there were other things, the tennis courts, like I said, at Old Mountain Field, a lot of people don't realize that. Half of that upper court was paid for with operational money from my athletic budget at the time, not my money, but it was my operational budget. It wasn't a capital budget. So, you know, that's how things evolved, and it wasn't like this is my turf. No, that's your turf. Make a cliche, I wish everybody hold hands.
Thanks, Bob. I think that's good history for us all to know. Last time I knew was on the tennis team, we were still playing competition over there at Old Mountain Field, so it's interesting to hear it all, all involved. All right. I see that David Mosher as their hand up, but I'm guessing that might not be David, so we'll see. Please do state your name for that.
Okay, hi, Abel, it's Raisa. So my question is, would RIDE see moving back to Columbia Street as a problem? And that's my question for Sam, because you have said that this is just an exploration of a project. And what I've heard over the course of the evening is that there would be a problem after stage two, moving back to something else. I've also had people sending me messages, so I'm gonna ask a couple of questions for people who aren't comfortable getting on. I want to know what are the hard stops for the Town Council and School Committee pre-September fifteenth for not submitting the application? Cost, I would hope, would be one. This project is supposed to be a one shot. We have for significant improvements based on the amount we are spending for quite a number of years. If we pare down to some watered down version that still costs eighty-five million dollars, which is a reality, doesn't give us much room for improvement, who makes the call to stop? Who makes the call to stop? Because I haven't seen anybody on this Town Council, this School Committee, or this Building Committee making a call to stop besides the voters in the referendum. And if we're talking about spending taxpayer dollars to sell a bond to taxpayers, I have a really big problem with that. And I'm often met with. And I'm often met with stares and it, it's, I have a problem with that too.
Thank you, Raisa. So, I mean, one thing, this is not a public hearing where we invite questions from the public necessarily. I will open up the floor to anyone who might want to answer some of those questions that were posited. Uh, but it's not, you know, nobody's forced to. I will say, I mean, clearly cost has got to be uh, a stopping point, you know? We have not seen cost estimates. So, you know, that's unfortunate at this point. Uh, you know, one thing that we heard tonight, it's good news is that, you know, uh, bonds are cheap right now. So there is the potential that, that $78 million figure that we sort of saw as an upper limit before might not be the upper limit now, uh, given that fact. But I, it's gotta be, there has to be an upper limit. That's going to be a discussion between, you know, the town council, finance director, Rob, and what the council is, is comfortable with as a whole. I, I don't have, you know, not knowing what the cost estimates are and what Zach is going to tell us about the bond market and the figures that come from that estimating, it's, it's hard to say a figure right now.
Can I add to what I'm saying about two years ago, we had people who are sitting at the table right now who were extremely concerned about a walkable school being closed. And if Columbia Street isn't a walkable school, I don't know what is. And Columbia Street has kids who actually have a disposable income. So I'm curious to hear from the people who were so worried about Wakefield School closing because it had an impact on Main Street businesses, when I know for certain that especially on Wednesday mornings, when children go to the bowling alley for breakfast, they go to Phil's for breakfast, et cetera. Does anybody here at this table have a concern about moving the high school away from Columbia Street? Does anybody?
I do.
Who's that?
That was Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle. Do you, Emily?
Nope, I actually think it's advantageous to our most at-risk and vulnerable kids to put our high school at a place where they can access it um, over on Curtis Corner for our families and for engagement with the community. So no, I, I fully support this. Um, and I think that our elementary schools, remaining community walkable schools, that, that's, that's great. So I'm, I'm very pleased with this plan.
Yeah.
So, uh, Raisa, you did raise one question that um, uh, to Sam, I believe, about whether, you know, if some way the decision was made after, so, you know, we submit the stage two, is it possible theoretically that you could still switch to the Columbia Street location? And, you know, I have that fly with Ride.
Thank you, Abel.
So I, I'm going to jump in here and just offer one observation and then Sam, by all means, you can deal with the, the second piece of this. If the application submitted was an application for Columbia Street, that's not going to cause Ride any difficulty. You know, if, if the stage two that was sent back for modification by Ride were simply modified and those modifications were sufficient for Ride, that would be fine. It's a different question to say if you submit an application for one school in one location, switching it to a different one would probably kick you out of the stage two. They'd have to say, go back and start over. So Sam, I'm, I'm, so the point is, it depends on when you make that change. If you made that change before submission of the stage two, not a problem, I suspect. If you make that change after stage two submission, that's a totally different project.
Yeah, that, that's correct, Rob, but I think you summarized it. If, if you went in with one and you changed, it's consistent with what Tracy said earlier. You just, you would have to reset your whole stage two application process.
And I think it's important to remember that Ride said no thank you to Columbia Street. They didn't want to invest in that building. I think that's a very, very important piece. I think if we were to submit a second stage two at Columbia Street, we stand a very good chance of them saying no thank you again.
I think what's important to remember is that the stage two application was submitted without anyone sitting up here actually reading it. It was fraught with errors. And Ride said no thank you because of that.
Yeah, I
That's your opinion, Raisa. I sat at a meeting with Joe De Silva in Providence at Ride and he looked me dead in the eye and said, I don't like this. Do you, can you do something else? He wanted us to build a brand new school.
Okay, at some point, it would be wonderful to have a real postmortem and know what was wrong with the stage two application for Columbia and it, it sounds like there was a different process going forward after the switch to Curtis Corner location was made. And there's been a lot more communication between Ride and the school building committee and the school administration, which I think has been very fruitful. And it seems like they're very, uh, you know, open-minded to the current proposal from, from what I hear here.
I have one more, one more bite at this. What hasn't happened is community input. It hasn't. And it's, that's what's extremely concerning. I attended a meeting at Columbia Street where there were 100 people there and the 100 people there were there because neighbors passed out flyers to get them there and they had no idea what was going on. So you, as a town council, need to include Columbia Street in this conversation. And that's what's not been included. And the people at, at the meeting were very, very concerned and had no idea what was going on. And I can assure you that as you have moved forward with this conversation, they still don't have an idea. Entire community still does not have an idea about what is happening with this facility's plan.
So why aren't coming to meetings? If, if they knew about this project back when we had that forum, pre-COVID,
Jason, you're a show to them. I'm not going to do this with you. I found you very rude tonight and I am not going to do this with you.
All right, Raisa. Thank you. I think, you know, we've discussed the, you know, the lack of outreach that's been done and the desire to do better in the future. And I want to thank committee members who have expressed that. All right, Karen Humes.
Hi Karen Humes, I have three questions. I might be ahead of the project on it, so not totally sure. Do we know what like back-of-the-house improvements we're getting at Curtis Corners? Obviously the space is awesome. You know, when you're looking at what's coming new, what structurally, because we know there's a lot of issues structurally and HVAC and all that. Do we know what back-of-the-house improvements are coming through, like what's not new? And then if there's cost overruns, what are we looking at removing? And then related to that, um, if this goes over, let's say we're over 10 million, is the 10 million coming off the high school? Or is the 10 million coming off in pieces, like we'll take some from the elementary, some from Broad Rock, some from the high school? Like where are we going to look at rolling back? And those are just the three.
Thank you, Karen. Maybe Tracy, I don't know who might have a good grasp for answering those questions.
So, um, I think once we get the cost estimates in and there's kind of, um, we know where we're at and there's kind of line items, then there'll be some decisions as to what scope would be in and out of the project. I think the second part of that is kind of, um, once you get more into the construction, there would be different options for materials. One might cost more than the other and then you could, you know, put the skylight. That'll be more of a very detailed discussion once you get further along. For now, it would just be general scope. We're having a lot of the renovations priced as single line items. So you could pick and choose what gets included in the project.
Okay, so like the renovations, you're talking about like the HVAC stuff, so that will come. And then, and then I don't know whose question this would be. So if we go 10 million over, are we saying that we are keeping elementary at that cost complete, like we're not going to scroll back on anything with elementary, would all come off the high school? Or are we looking at taking across the top? But I don't know whose question that would be.
I'm not sure that that could be answered right now, Karen. It's a little ahead of, of, of something we could answer at this point.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yep.
Tracy, can I ask a follow-up to that where, or, or actually maybe not Tracy, but I guess everybody here. When those numbers, we're getting those numbers from the class estimators from both you guys and from Sam, like in the next week or whatever. So that discussion is going to happen before September 16th or 15th or whatever, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Greg Sweet.
Can you hear me?
Yes, indeed.
All right. Took a lot of notes from tonight and this morning. I kind of got it narrowed down to three questions, comments, I guess they're questions. One of them is, if, if we move forward on Curtis Corner, is there room to put in addition on if down the road, we seem to get more kids and we require an addition? Because it looks to me like it's pretty tight.
One option would be to put a partial second story on the classroom wing in the back.
So the foundation now is going to be um, designed to hold two, three stories or whatever it's going to be?
No, it's existing now, but we had looked at it with the structural engineer. And if, if you wanted to, you could put a second story over the one-story wing in the back.
Okay. Another question, and I think this was from this morning, although I'm not positive. I think it was asked if the ledge and water problem still exists in the back? Because it did, I don't know, three or four years ago, but it doesn't now. I think it was said this morning. What, what, what changed?
No, so the site plan that was shown today, I, I know because of the computer and the size of the file, it was a little blurry. You couldn't read it, but if you were to download it, each one of the test pits that were done have the information as to the location of the water table and whether they had encountered ledge. It's on that document now.
Oh, yeah, I, I got that, but I mean, you're right, I couldn't read it. But my question was, how does that compare to the tests done three or four years ago? I mean, I think it was said that it really wasn't feasible to put anything up there because, partly because of the ledge and the water.
So I guess I don't know what was done, um, what, what you're talking about. But right now, the additions are down on the lower portion of the site. So maybe if it was a, the only ledge that was encountered was up into the disc golf course up, up above in the upper portion of the site.
Okay. And as far as costs go, hearing the discussion type, it basically looks like the elementary schools are just getting some furniture and paint, to be quite honest. I, I know it's got, it's going to be a little bit more than that, but it's pretty minimal. Taking care of the elementary schools, are all of the conditions that Ride, it's not Ride, but what, uh, that study pointed out, all the deficiencies, are they going to be taken care of?
Um, so right now, what was proposed for the educational enhancements in the elementary schools, which was primarily the media center and the um, learning commons portion we were talking about, would potentially be part of that bond project, the bond-funded project, the, the cap that we've been talking about. Capital expenditures would still be built into your five-year capital plan per, per school.
Tracy, if I may, I think what Greg asking is, will the deficiencies found in the Jacobs report be addressed in the elementary schools as part of the project?
I guess I didn't say it well. Some would be and the extent of that still will be based on the cost estimates when they come in. So obviously, um, we can move more in or carry more capital expenditure based on, by some budget.
But you're contemplating all life safety improvements that were identified as being deficient will be made, all life safety issues.
Would, would money be taken from other parts of the project to take care of Wakefield or whatever the worst schools were? I don't have the report in front of me, so I can't say for sure which ones. But there are definitely some schools worse than others. Will the elementary schools be taking money from the high school project, say, to, to make sure that, that those inefficient, or those deficiencies get repaired?
No, so, um, anything that's proposed under the five-year capital improvement plan as capital expenditures is one funding source. And if you were going to bond and put your major projects in that, another column as a separate funding source, Ride does not allow you to cross over between one and the other.
So essentially, we'll, we'll have to take out a bond to do the big project and then we'll have to take out another bond to, to possibly take care of the deficiencies in the other buildings?
I, I wouldn't expect that. I think that'd be just from your capital expenditure budget.
Okay. Even if it comes out to be millions? I, I have no idea what the figures are, I, I have just no clue. So if it was millions though, I don't know how that could come out of the capital budget.
So it might be helpful, this is a point that keeps coming up and I'm going to ask Mary Ann to explain this. It will be a large number that we're required under law to put to capital improvements on an annual basis. I don't want to say the number because I don't want to get it wrong.
Correct. If you remember, one of the things that, that was agreed to when the Article 9 was passed as relates to this particular bond issue that was eventually followed by the state is that we must, what they call it, a maintenance of effort. And it's, uh, it caps out at 3% of the operating budget of the community that you have to put aside and use to maintain your facilities. So it's a start to put, so what we'll probably start doing as the time goes on is put funds aside. And when you could look at a, any kind of five or 10-year capital plan, it doesn't mean you're going to do it all in one year. You might put X amount of dollars aside each year. And then in the second, third or fourth year is when you may do the major projects that may cost significant money, where you're using money set aside as opposed to flowing some kind of bond.
I thought that 3% was predominantly for maintenance.
It is for maintenance. A HVA system is considered maintenance.
Yeah, but say, say there's a weak floor, I'm just using that as an example. I have no idea whether that's the case or not. But say there's a weak floor, that's a fairly significant repair. Does that come out of that 3%? Or is, would be, would we have to take, take out some type of bond to fix that?
At this point, it's difficult to speculate, weak floor and stuff like that. I, I, I just don't think the speculation we're making this evening at this point is beneficial. There's a number of ways where we can fund. There's a number of ways where we can fund these projects going forward. We do have the maintenance of effort that we, we need to do. I think the important thing to do, and, and we've started working on that, is to have a five-year capital plan. And we have to every year, each five years, resubmit to RIDE. And the capital plan that we put together would help us to facilitate, to make sure that in the future, we do not have the deferred maintenance that we're now seeing with these buildings.
Okay, I, I guess when this report's done, will we know what the dollar value will be for the work not being done at the elementary schools?
This five-year plan will include costs associated with, to maintain the schools for the next five years. And that's all schools, including elementary schools. So to answer your question, yes.
Okay, okay. So when RGB comes back with the price, if, if, if the whole project comes out to be 95 million and we, we only agree to do 95, I mean, 85 million, and the other 10 million is for the, to repair the elementary schools, then that will come out of the 3%, but over, say, a five, six, seven-year period. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I think that's it, and thank you, guys.
Thanks, Greg. Sue, just before we go to the next person, could you bring Linda back into the meeting? I think she got bumped out somehow. All right, Cadence Hansen.
Oh, hello?
Yes, you are.
Excellent. It just took me a moment for the unmute to pop up. All right. So I'm gonna say this again, and I'm sorry to beat a dead horse, but I think it's really important. I know it's been covered. It's really important to reach out to the community. And I'm not trying to say that, I'm not trying to go back on what we haven't done. I'm saying, let's start now, let's move forward. If we want to sell this bond, we need to share this information with the community. You know, we have, I think you guys said about 50 people on this phone call, and there are 30,000 people in town. Imagine how many people are gonna have to talk to how many people, to talk to how many people. So this is really important if we want to share this bond, if we want to pass this bond. And I had mentioned it this morning, I mentioned it one more time. I think it would be really helpful. You could even take what, you know, was presented today during the meeting, cut it down to, you know, just the real important information. Share it onto a website, put some flyers up, send out emails, put it up on social media, maybe put it in the, in the newspapers. So people have an idea of what's happening. Also, crap, I had another thing to say. I would like to comment on what Bob said earlier. Bob, who was talking about the athletic fields, I think that he has a spirit that we need to really all try to embrace, to try to work together with our Parks and Parks Department. Because everything that we're doing now is for the students and for our community. And I, oh, one more thing, sorry. I remembered one of the things. Is Kate brought this up, and I think that we should, and I realize that we're talking about submitting, and I believe you said three weeks, but I think we really need to take a deep dive and look at what would this look like in, you know, we're currently in the middle of COVID. So what if this happened again in 50 years or 30 years? If we have another outbreak like this, what are we gonna do? Do our new classrooms, are they, are they prepared for this? I think it's a really good idea to do a deep dive on this. And I'm just gonna circle back around to the community comment. I'm not trying to beat a dead horse. I'm not trying to tell you, you have done something wrong. I'm just saying, you know, like, let's start fresh, move forward and reach out. That's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Cadence. And Doral Beasley.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. I was just, this is like hour number seven. So many people have been on as long as I have today. Hour number seven here, staring at my screen. I was kind of thinking back to when I saw this, this bulletin in the Narragut Times back in November 2017. I just saying to myself, gee, if I'd just thrown that paper out, I never would have heard about this project. And I'd probably be watching basketball on TV right now. I have a question for Mary Ann. Mary Ann, you still there? Mary Ann Crawford?
I'm still here.
All right. Hey, what time's that first boat to Black Island leave on Saturday morning?
I'm on the 8:00 AM on Monday morning.
All right, that's great. All right, so.
Are you still gonna call and ask me questions?
When you're over there in Black Island?
Yeah.
I might, I might call.
Do it just for fun.
Don't let me down.
I may call, but you'll never see me in person because when I get outside the breakwater down near Point Jude, it's over the, it's over the side for me, if you know what I'm saying. All right, anyway. So I just have one thing here tonight. So I looked at the, I looked at the, the addition to the, to the, to Curtis Corners, like 70, if I got it rear-er, that's 77,000 square feet in total, if I added them up all right, right? So and Ride, and Ride's new guideline in their one-page thing that they put out, I think it was in, in March, says that for a high school, you're supposed to use $535 a square foot. Okay, but that includes the 20% on soft cost. So when you calculate it backwards and take out the 20%, it works out to about $400 a square foot. So I multiplied the new construction for Curtis Corner by the $535. It came out to 41,250, 41,250,000 now. You still have about, close to, from what it looks like here, the, still the, the original building has to be, you have to do something to the original building. I'm assuming you're gonna do something to it. All right, so let's say, so let's forget that for right now. So right now, we're up at 41 million. Plus, they want you to add $5,000 per kid for FFNE and IT. So that's another 3.8. So now we're at about $45 million. So $45 million for Curtis Corner, all you've done is put the new stuff in. Now we go over to Broad Rock. You got 32,000 from this morning. You guys said you've got 32,500 or so square feet new construction times the $509 that Ride says you're supposed to use for middle school. So that comes up to 16.5 million. So now we're up to $61 million. And I have to, and then I have to put in that, you know, the FFNE thing there for those kids, which is about, I don't know how many kids are gonna be in that school, but let's say like $2 million worth. So that's 45, 61. You got 63 million. So just for the new construction, at Curtis Corner, new constructionally and Broad Rock, and the FFNE and, and the IT, it's like $63 million. So you only working with 85 to start with. So now you've, what you do now is you take that 22 million you got left over, and you're gonna take out the, the soft costs and all the costs that you would be paying people to do the job. So when you do that, you end up with about $20 million left over. So you got $20 million left over to do everything else. There's just no way. Okay, if you only, if you only touched, if you only touched a quarter of the rest of Curtis Corner, which would be like 25,000 square feet, and did something that was actually worth doing, is maybe $250 a square foot. And then do that same thing to Broad Rock, you're, 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 you're close to being out of money. So I, I'm really, I'm really looking forward to these cost estimates coming, to come in. And because I think it's gonna be a huge eye-opener. And it's, and I'm going back to what I've been harping on for, for months now. And that is that we're, we're going at this whole project, I feel, in, in, in one big wrong way. And that is this, we should be going, we should be seeing how much money we can borrow. Because I, I looked at it, Mr. Zarneska. All right. So you were calculating 85 at 4% for 20 years. So when you do, when you, when you roll that out in, on, on my calculator, on a bonding calculator I got in my computer, that actually comes from a Massachusetts Department of Education. It's pretty nice. So anyway, so when you do that, so if you were, if you were borrowing 85 for four, at 4% over 20 years, you pay like, that's about $20 million in interest rate. You're gonna pay $20 million over those 20, over those 20 years in interest. Okay, if you borrow $143 million at 2% for 25 years, it's also $20 million in interest you pay. The, the chairman of the Fed, and I've mentioned this a couple of months ago at least, the chairman of the Fed, when he talked about the recovery from, from, from COVID. And first of all, when you look at the stock market, people don't think the stock market is reality. It's not. It's, they're like, I don't know what's going on at the stock market, but they're like in another world. Anyway, so anyway, so the Fed chair said, these low interest rates are gonna be this way for easily two years going forward and maybe longer. Even if, even if the interest rates don't pan out, may, you know, why wouldn't you borrow, why wouldn't you create the project to borrow more mon, you know, to set it up to borrow more money? And then if you don't end up needing the money, you don't borrow the money. And that way, you, you can subtract things from the top, things that you were hoping to do, but you, you can't anymore because of the interest rate changes. Instead of where we are now, where you say, all right, here's our, here's, here's our max, 85. And it's probably maybe not enough to do whatever, all you want, and you're still gonna be, you're still gonna be thinking about whether or not you, you have enough money to do all your stuff. So it just, to me, it doesn't make any sense that, that you would, you would start, you would work from a low number when interest rates are low. It would be way better. If you're paying $20 million for interest rates, why wouldn't you borrow the 100? Why wouldn't you make a project for 143 million? And then two years down the line, if they're not still at 2%, then you only borrow what you can afford. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beasley. If, if it's helpful, I'm happy to sort of give a, a sort of explanation of why we're not building a budget that way yet. Helpful, I'm happy to do it. Very, very succinctly, 2% is an unusual thing. It had, it wasn't the case when we started this project, and it's, it's highly unusual. I've read the comments from the, the Fed, I've read comments from many economists who are predicting that we are likely to see low interest rates for the foreseeable future. And in fact, rates may, by most accounts, may be heading down further than they have been so far. Nobody who advises municipalities is suggesting that we plan for a project that won't go to market until two or three years out. Some of the bonded money may come later than that. That we anticipate a continuing 2% or lower rate. That's just not what anybody is, is recommending that we do. So 2% is, is sort of off the table. That's just not, it, we could get lucky, but you plan for the worst case. You don't plan for the best-case scenario when, when doing financial planning. The other thing about it is going in with a high-cost project to ride, looking for reimbursement, does make some, some sense in, you know, in a simple way. But if the project has to come down in scope and that changes the scope of the project substantially, RIDE may change the deal and say, no, you can't do that. You've, you've got to produce the project that we said we would fund. And if you're not gonna do that, then we're out of the deal. So our 50% is contingent upon the, the cap. Let's call it $85 million. If we go over the $85 million, then Ride is gonna say, you're on your own for everything above the $85 million. We're not reimbursing at any level for that. And if you come in with a $40 million project, that's a different project. We're gonna have to talk about it. We're not gonna guarantee 50% on a $40 million project. So if we came in with a $140 million project and decided to settle on a $100 million project, Ride would say the same thing. They'd say, we're not good for 50% on your different project. We're only good for 50% on your original project. We don't have that much administrative and admin, and institutional leeway. If this were the private sector, we might, but in, in government finance, we simply don't have that leeway.
All right, I also see that Zach has his hand up, so.
Just very quickly, I wanted, maybe Sam can answer the question. I think it was Ms. Mosher who raised the point, and it wasn't addressed about, I think it was the contract that was presented and approved by the school committee, the communications piece, that was the optional add-on. How, that would not be used to market the actual project. It would be used to facilitate and prepare communications. Because I personally, I don't know about anybody else, but I, I would have a serious problem using town funds or school department funds to put together a marketing campaign for the project when, you know, it should just be as neutral as possible to get the word out there. I, I.
I, I, I jump on that, Zach, and thank you for mentioning it. It is, it's actually illegal for us to use public money to campaign in favor of the passage or, or the rejection of a bond referendum. We cannot use public money for that purpose.
It was not in any way for like influencing. It was for, to, to engage a professional firm so that we could utilize multiple platforms and ensure that we were informing as much of the community in as many ways as possible as to what was going on with the project. Definitely was not influential. I think people heard communications and it kind of got morphed. And then you would hear people talking about it, and they're like, hiring an advertising firm, a marketing firm, a sales firm. And it really was a consultant that understands how to engage the community and help them become informed about the scope of a project. But it wasn't received well. And so then the motion was made to pass that without keeping that. That was March 10.
A, a political campaign is not allowed. A, you know, anti-smoking campaign is. So long as what you're doing is tied to a public purpose, you're using a campaign to inform people about policy options, that's fine.
Okay, I see, Michelle, you've raised your hand.
Um, I just want to emphasize the fact that in all my speaking tonight regarding communication, I in no way, shape or form was thinking along the lines of using taxpayer money to do that. I was just more thinking of a community outreach more than just school department people that have some kind of tie to the school department, more than that, and more than electronic communication. Electronic communication is great. We used to have a South Kingstown School Department Facebook page. We don't have that anymore. Those are great things. Reaching out to all the families in the school department is great, but we need to reach out to the community members that are not tied into those venues. But we need to reach out to the community members that are not tied into those venues. But I do not. I was not thinking along the lines of using. Taxpayer money to fund that.
And that's just what Stephanie was saying. That's, uh, that's what we were voting on, I think, on March tenth. And at, at that point, you voted it down, Michelle. So it, it's sort of like in hindsight, it would have been a good idea. Um, for us to have done that, but. You know, you didn't support it at the time.
Still don't, I still don't support using taxpayer money to, to fund. Communication for this plan.
If we're, if we have taxpayer funded people doing the communication, it's taxpayer funded.
All right, uh, Brian, your hands up?
Sure. Um, I don't have that document in front of me, but I remember seeing something. And I think the issue with it was. There were a lot of bad choice of words in that communication. Um, if I remember correctly, it did talk about selling the actual project. Um, so once, once we engaged in that, again, uh, we definitely need a communications person. Uh, and we had talked to, uh, Sam and Parag Ryan regarding that. Uh, it's an important piece, uh, from the ability to be able to disseminate. Information to the, to the public in regards to what the project is. What we're planning on doing, how much it's gonna actually cost. Uh, people need the information in order to make. An educated decision on supporting this project. Um, I support this project. But I do believe that, you know, like everyone's been saying tonight, it's a town, town wide, uh, decision, uh, to be made. And as the building committee, I, I, I feel strongly that we need to make sure that we're communicating and doing a better job at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Kate?
Um, I know, uh, Sam said it earlier this evening, that role was for after stage two. Approval and for in from getting improper information out to the community during, um, up, leading up to bond approval within the community. Um, I, the way Stephanie described it was, was, was right. It wasn't a PR. Marketing firm. It was all worded properly. Um. But I mean, I guess it's neither here nor there. At, at, at this point, we're talking stage two submittal going in for September sixteenth. E- even if we had. You know, uh, gotten that service, it was, it was for after. Um, but, um, I, I think, feel like I'm, this has been like the longest, like twenty four hours ever. And, uh, I, I don't know how much more we need to kind of. And it's your, it's your meeting, Abel. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm like rambling now and I apologize. But, uh, I just, you know, we really need to focus on stage two and getting to. The sixteenth or whatever date, whatever date that meeting is with us, the fourteenth.
Right, yes. Um, I think we are winding down here and I want to thank you all for participating and being patient. We have, uh, one more hand raised, uh, from the public, uh, Christie Fish.
Hi, everyone. It's Christie. I just, uh, wanted to end on a positive note by saying for me as a parent. And I actually got some texts about this, just talking to friends. It was. Very exciting to see the connection. Of the space that's being created in order to kind of optimize the educational goals that we have. For our children in mind and talking more about, um. Progressive education and bringing us into, you know, twenty first century learning. And to be able to see a space that supports that. And even though in the elementary schools, the changes are. They look small. They're actually quite big in terms of what they can do. With the core of the school being really fully dedicated to that community space and what can be done in that space. So. I think it's exciting to see that. Um. In terms of the community engagement, I think it's really important in the sense that I think there's a lot of people in the community we don't hear from. That can add a lot of value to this. But at the same time, I do think we need to be really intentional about how the community engagement happens. Um, cause I think it needs to be. Done. In a way where it's effective and appropriate because as we can see, um, things tend to go off the rails. And it's really hard to stay focused on what the heart of this project is. Which is really creating spaces that are ideally, you know. Gonna serve our children and community to the best of their ability. And so I, I, I really hope as a community, we can band together. At least on this in terms of the space we're going to use, how we're going to use it and thinking about. Who the space is for, which is really the most important piece, in my opinion. So, thank you.
Thank you, Christie. And, uh, with that, I'm just gonna not pay any attention to the raise hand button anymore. And I'm gonna make, uh, one final, uh, statement here, which is, uh, just that, um. Yeah, this is a very big issue for the town. Uh, I know that a lot of you have put a lot of work. Into coming to this point and, uh, emotions run high when you put a lot of work into something and it's criticized. Um, but I, I do wanna say that I think, uh, Bob Kavanaugh had a good point. Let's, uh, try to keep working together. Uh, make the plan better. Uh, we have a few more weeks. I do, uh, hope that, uh, many of you, maybe all of you will. Join us at a follow up meeting, uh, after we get the cost estimates. And that'll help us make the best decision possible for the community. And, uh, thank you for being here tonight. Uh, with that, I will end the meeting and, uh. I guess Sue, you can do that for me. Um, have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, Abel.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.